We are gathered here today for the council meeting of Wednesday, February 21st, 2024. It's 6:45 PM and we are ready to start. Meeting has been called to order. Please rise if you can to take the pleasure, please. Madam City Clerk, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fruein.
Here.
Mayor Mohan.
Here.
Mr. City Attorney, is there a closed session report?
There is nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you. There are no ceremonial items. The next item is postponements and orders for the day. And the subject is cessation of hybrid commission and committee meetings. This has been postponed from February 6th, 2024. And it has been postponed at the request of city staff. And I'd like a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Oh, yeah, Councilmember Way, you need to comment.
I'll second it.
Oh, your second. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second.
And just to clarify, that's to continue this to a date to be determined?
Yes. That is true. This will be continued to a date that will be identified by staff for a future date.
Can you start the vote here? Start the voice vote? You mean, start the voting mechanism?
Yes, yes. We will vote by lights.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, the next portion is oral communications. And this portion is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion, including informational items. The total time for oral communication is three minutes per speaker. And Madam City Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
Yes, Mayor, I have two requests to speak in Community Hall. I see no hands currently raised virtually. Just a reminder, anyone wishing to speak on this item, please have your hand raised on virtually in the next nine minutes or a request to speak submitted. First, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Jeff Foster. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I'm glad that the sun is going to be out for a couple more days. Too much rain. I just wanted to start out, I have two comments. One of them is that initially, I think that the state has been very mean to Cupertino and Apple. They are accusing Apple and Cupertino of doing something that is completely legal. My husband has stated this many times, that there are other corporations in California that have taken advantage of this type of tax relationship with other cities. I think Williams Sonoma is one of them, and there are others. And I find it very, very distressing that the state would find to do something like this against Cupertino and Apple at this time, when Cupertino has taken a lot of potshots from people accusing it of things, calling the people in Cupertino names. And now we've got HCD, they won't give us our certification even though we've tried and spent millions of dollars. And I feel like that the state is using HCD to try to get back at us. I think they're, I think they want the money from Apple. The governor has an escalating budget which is out of control. And I think they want to take, they want to make Cupertino and Apple pay for that budget. This is how I feel as someone who lives in this city. This tax agreement has been happening since 2005. I was probably here the night it was voted on by a former city council member and a council. And I find it extremely distressing that the state is using this to try to abuse Cupertino and Apple. It's not fair. The governor, sorry, the president is in town fundraising, and I hope that he takes a look at this because it is not fair for the state to be abusing Cupertino and Apple this way, after all the years of service that Apple has done to this state. It's disgusting. Also, I heard, I have heard Mark Verveil speak five times present on issues with the statistics of the bad Rena numbers. I heard Eric Philseth, who is a city council member in Palo Alto, talk about how HCD and the state is not producing any affordable housing. What they are trying to force the cities to do is statistically impossible. And I am really, really concerned that HCD has no authority anymore to do what they're doing with the housing elements. We're giving away our city and rezoning it, and they have no authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Jeff Foster, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you. What I want to, she was perfect on the timing. I probably, you'll probably cut me off. What I want to talk about is the railroad tracks. As you can see, I'm wearing a T-shirt called Rails to Trails. I gave Huang a booklet called Rails to Trails for 25 or 30 years. My only financial interest here is I've been sending them money because I think it's a fabulous organization and doing, creating throughout the country. And the magazine I gave her, I have a copy of a highlight of what they've accomplished and what's going on here, where our tax dollars, your tax dollars that you pay to the federal government is going to San Antonio, Texas to build, to turn their railroad tracks into trails. And so I would like you to take advantage. I've tried, I've talked with the city, no response at all. County, good response, but they said they don't know what's happening. I've called Union Pacific, they haven't returned my call. In talking with Hugh a few minutes ago, I had the feeling that there's been some correspondence already with no response. My suggestion is to go to Rails to Trails. They do this and help people. Like I say, I have no financial interest or benefit by this. I would like to be able to bike, if my idea comes true, we'll be able to bike from here one day up to the dish in Palo Alto. The next day, we'll be able to bike to the Lexington Dam with some cooperation from the city of San Jose, which I think they're working on trails connecting Los Gatos Trail to some of their trail system, the Coyote Creek Trail in specific. You'll be able to bike to the Coyote Creek Dam down in Morgan Hill. And it's very easy. The city of Saratoga already has an example, the type of trail. A fellow by the name of Joe died before the year 2011. Because in 2011, the city of Saratoga built a type of trail that I envisioned along the current track that we have right now called Joe's Trail. And it runs from the railroad tracks right past on Highway 9. Highway, yeah, you know, right by the railroad tracks, all the way down to Saratoga Avenue. And then the train tracks, but I think they've got, did that under the rights of PG&E. Because there, the track, the roadway is even wider. But I can envision that type of trail. And just up here where Los Gatos, where Los Altos and Cupertino come together by foothill, there'd be a little extra work involved to connect the trail to, bring it up to the foothill level. But the Cupertino Trail has already been, exists there.
Thank you, Jeff. That is your time.
Okay, so I'm going to leave you all, I gave.
Thank you, I will collect that.
And I'll leave you.
And our next speaker is Lisa Warren, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Rota Frye. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So just quickly, I'm a little, I'm more than a little disappointed that Item 2 is just being pushed off with no date in mind, when in the meantime, we're still having a process, a policy that doesn't make sense to a lot of residents, where meetings are not available as they used to be. I feel like it's a stall tactic, and I would like to have at least had a date set tonight, instead of, we still don't know when this will come up again. And I'm particularly bothered by that because it was clear in the beginning of the last meeting that the mayor stated she wasn't going to proceed with that agenda item because she got so many comments from the public. So the public is waiting and waiting for the right thing to be done. And so that's an issue. I was saddened to read in the oral communications, written communications, that one of our council members had to defend themselves from an attack by a presumed resident. That bothers me. It should bother everyone. And I think I'll, I think I'll quit there, but, but, no, I won't. Because another thing I'm worried about is how the rise is going to proceed. There's confusion, there's worry, there's wonder, there's wanting answers. And I don't know if it can be told to us when we'll have an answer to this, but it seems really backward, disgusting, and other adjectives, if the city, the state, the powers that be would allow a project of that size or any size, who first submitted something as an SB 35 in 2018. We are, we're eight years in, actually, my date was wrong. We are eight years into this, and yet they still might not have to follow any building codes, any ordinances that this city has respectfully and smartly set up for development, and they just all get ignored. And if that's the case, this is a really sad state of affairs, that we have a developer who doesn't even give a shit. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker is Peggy Griffin, followed by Rota Frye, followed by Luis Sedadi.
Good evening. I'm going to use the slide projector, please.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good evening, council members, staff, and the public. The city of Cupertino is going to submit their third draft of their housing element to HCD on Friday. This is the link, engagecupertino.org-public-dash-documents. This, when you bring up that link, this is the document, this particular item right there. Comments are due, that's unclear. It says they're going to submit it Friday, but they don't give a deadline for the public. Seven days from the time they published it would be midnight Thursday. I'd like somebody to clarify exactly when the deadline is. Send your comments to housing@cupertino.org. The new changes are in green, November's changes are yellow, and the red line is October. I want to draw the attention to the public for page H-17, Strategy HE-1.3.6, two bullets. I'm not going to read it, it'll take too long. Translation of the first bullet, every single family home located on a corner lot all across the city of Cupertino can become apartments. If they use density bonus, height, setback, and parking restrictions can and will be waived. The second bullet in that same strategy, translation, every single home, family home located behind or around a shopping center can become apartments. This is really obtuse to the normal person. If they use density bonus, height, setback, and parking restrictions can and will be waived. Arterials are these streets. Major collectors are these streets that they're referring to. So if shopping centers on these streets, if you're behind those shopping centers, you're affected. To give you an idea of how many streets this is in Cupertino, look at them. It's all across Cupertino. Silverado Avenue, Clifton Way, McClellan Road, Terry Way, Sunrise Drive, Adrian Avenue, Santa Clara, Partlet Place, Norwich and Hurst, Dennison, Wheaton, Stern, Brett, Judy, Tent House, each, it's everybody. Please, this is the item. Send your comments before Friday to housing@cupertino.org. Speak up now. This is real. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Rota Frye, followed by Luis Sedadi. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, council members. I have more to say than I have time to do it. Some of my comments you already have in your packets. With respect to Valco, yeah. The developers not being community-minded by selecting the antiquated 2016 building codes for the entire project. Building codes are improved every three years. Since 2016, the codes have improved to require better energy efficiencies, zero net energy, solar, no gas, bird safe, and enhanced fire codes. This is an environmental issue, a public safety issue, and an affordability issue. So please do what you can. And this issue actually underscores why Councilmember Way's idea of having our city hall built on Valco property is a bad idea. The project removes over 700 trees, that's also bad. And did you know that reducing the height of some of the buildings to 85 feet, the developer will be able to take advantage of a new law that allows projects to avoid skilled and trained workers? That means they're not required to hire union labor. That's unfortunate. And also, by the way, there are some buildings that are over 200 feet tall, skyscrapers. The project has fewer affordable units, and fewer of the used units are very affordable. And frankly, it's shocking that this SB 30, this is an SB 35 project because SB 35 are not supposed to have hazmat, and this one does. We've got a couple of open cases. As you know, developer has reneged on his promises to our community on Cupertino's Main Street and in multiple other cities. So please make sure the affordable housing is built in advance and more lucrative aspects of this project. I urge you to keep the, hold the developer accountable. The other unfortunate thing is that half the retail, of the planned retail space is not there anymore. So if we can convince the developer to increase retail space, that would be great, as we need to boost sales tax since the Apple gravy train has derailed. Now, the second issue, I have quite a number of pages on this, it's in your packet, but I'm really concerned, having looked at the accounts payable, that the BMR Housing Fund, which is number 265, has been used for things that are not related to BMR. Over $170,000 that I found, and I'm, my search was not exhausted, has been used for illegal fees in the settlement with California Housing Defense Fund and the YMB lawsuit. By the way, YMB is an organization to which Vice Mayor Fruein has been associated. You know, we in good faith have had these funds allocated for BMR housing, and we need to make sure that that's where they go. And it's an anathema to me that a housewife from Cupertino has, is bringing this to city council. We should never have seen this, and please do what you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Rota. Next, we have Luis Sedadi, followed by Tyler Haas. Welcome, Luis.
Good evening. There's no rain, so we can walk back and forth from City Hall without being splattered on. And the air is fresh, and the frogs are out. I'm Luis Sedadi, and I have been listening to some wonderful presentations made by our mayor, Sheila Mohan. The State of the City address was wonderful. And also, today, our city manager, Pam Wu, did a budget overview at the Rotary. And it really gives me quite a bit of hope to see the transparency and how you have brought forth a plan that can be a win-win in working with partners to solve a big problem that we got hit with, thank you to the state judgment, but anyway, and that we're responding in a positive manner. And so it's easy to get freaked out and say, oh, this is wrong, and this is wrong, and oh, look at this, $100,000, and what is that about? But I just want to ask people to focus in the city that we have big problems, and we can get further ahead by working together and not freaking out over little details here and there. And our, so one thing is, a little detail is that the hybrid discussion has been delayed. And I'm fine with that because the city staff wanted to have extra time to speak to the different commissioners and to get more input from the residents and be prepared before they made a presentation. So I appreciate that, that they're going to be doing a thoughtful investigation and come back to us with a good hybrid compromise. Also, I'm very hopeful about the rise finally, having its plan, looks like it's going to be approved, and it can actually start proceeding in March. Now, people can freak out over different details. However, you got to look at the wins. Instead of 10, you know, like seven towers that are 20 stories, I think we're talking about three towers that are maybe 10 stories. And instead of a roof that's full of grass that's not accessible to the citizens, the grass is going to be on the ground floor. So that's accessible to the citizens. And, and so there's a lot of things in the modified rise that are good for the city and that we're going to start making some progress, instead of having an empty lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. And next, we have Tyler. Welcome, Tyler. Then we will move to, we have two hands raised on Zoom.
Hello, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And sorry for my tardiness. There was a really tough accident, so my thoughts are with that accident. My name's Tyler. I'm here on behalf of Civic Bell. We're a locally owned and operated civic engagement technology platform. We're a business for good, and we're throughout the peninsula kind of expanding our coverage. So what is Civic Bell? Civic Bell is a social platform, takes the visual appearance of something maybe like a Twitter that we'd be familiar with, but with key differences that make us a better alternative for productive civic engagement. We connect local-level government officials, such as yourselves, to their constituencies. And we have some purpose-built key differences that make us this better alternative, that we foster productive civic engagement more effectively. So one of those, most notably, is a residency verification. So if you were to put out a survey, per se, on Civic Bell, residents within the city of Cupertino could respond to that survey, and you, as officials, would have confidence that the only people responding to that survey, commenting on that post, engaging in a discussion, providing valuable feedback, are actual residents of Cupertino, not bots, not people from the next city over, but factual residents. So we have a decently established presence through San Mateo and Santa Clara counties. Some notable people using Civic Bell include State Assembly Member Mark Berman, as well as city council members kind of up and down from Pacific to Los Gatos to Mountain View and whatnot, including in Santa Clara County Government. So why I'm here is just to let the council know of our presence, that we're a free-to-use, publicly-available platform for officials and for residents to be able to kind of foster a higher-quality civic engagement setting. And particularly with reference to action, Agenda Item 8 this evening, it seems like there's a need within the city of Cupertino for alternative, non-costing ways to understand public opinion. We're working with some other cities in the area on understanding kind of public opinion around budget matters as we approach that July 1st date. So now's a prime time. If you're interested in learning more about us, you can go to civicbell.com. You can talk to me. I'm Tyler@civicbell.com. I'm the head of community engagement. I'd be happy to kind of further communicate about what we do and whatnot and guide you guys around. Or if you have any other questions, feel free to reach out. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. That's all.
Thank you, Tyler. And we have two hands on Zoom, Sam R. and call on user one. Welcome, Sam.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. We have a series of meetings coming up and in progress on budget-related matters, including community meetings that are coming up. I'd like to request all of our council members to please pay attention to cutting costs. Everything that we see so far has been discussion of how to increase fees on residents, how to consider tax hikes on residents, how to cut service hours on residents, and even the survey that was conducted, I'm appalled to see that the survey was only conducted with the business community, out of which only 182 responses were received. Where was the survey for the residents? When you're considering a tax on residents in the form of the TUT, why was this resident community not being surveyed? Why was the business community being surveyed, when in fact, there was no tax impact on the business community? And the business community further told you that 54% are in support of a TOT, which is a tax on the hotel occupancy, and I see that that option has been ruled out. So it seems like staff considers options that align with a certain section, and if that is not the feedback of the survey, then the entire option is discarded. Why are we not moving forward with TOT? TOT does not need to be on the ballot. Secondly, I wish to bring to your attention, if you look at the written communications for this meeting, thanks to Councilmember Chow for asking specifically, what is the cost of the hybrid meetings? The cost of a hybrid meeting in written communication, as per staff, is $210 for the first hour and $105 for every hour after that. So let's assume that you have a four-hour commission meeting, then you're looking at a grand total of, you know, 40,000. Let's just assume you have 10 commissions, you're going to meet maybe 10 times a year. You're talking of a cost of $40,000, okay? Now, we see study project after study project that goes all the way up to $170,000, and we're not even having to come to council to seek $170,000. So why is it that the public has to go through so much pain to have these meetings be restored on Zoom, when staff is able to spend $170,000 without even seeking approval? I do request that council reduce the discretionary spending a little bit on staff, that $170,000 has to come down to $30,000. If you look at the spend, we have study project after study project that goes $50,000 to $170,000. We cannot afford these study projects. So I ask you, there are council members coming up for a vote, the public is watching your actions on DICE, the public understands your positions on these. Please cut costs. Please do not raise costs on residents, cut costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. We have Long Zhao, who actually put in a request in Community Hall. Welcome, Long. And then we have one more person virtually.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Long Zhao, and I'm speaking on behalf of Cupertino Voice. Cupertino Voice is a group of Cupertino residents who care passionately about our community and the welfare of our city. We performed many surveys related to Cupertino issues. Please see CupertinoVoice.org for list. We noticed the city sent out a survey about new taxes only to Cupertino business owners, but not Cupertino residents. So in January, we performed a survey about the new taxes to Cupertino residents. The survey was sent to about 15,000 registered Cupertino voters and the people who subscribed to our survey. We received 341 total responses, including 296 responses from registered Cupertino voters. Given that we have about 33,000 registered voters in Cupertino, so the margin of error is about 5.67%, with 95% of confidence. is about 5.67%, with 95% of confidence level. So the conclusion is that the people who participated in the survey rejected most of their new taxes, except the hotel tax. But the people who participated in the survey overwhelmingly, that's about 78%, agreed on a measure to reduce spending, which is to...
Excuse me, excuse me, just a second. Are you speaking about item number eight on the agenda? Because this oral communications is for items not on the agenda.
Yeah, that's about item number eight.
That was my mistake. I actually... So I apologize. I didn't realize you were speaking under item eight.
Okay. Can I get 20 minutes back, 30 seconds back?
Yes, there will be a public comment allowance when... later on in the agenda.
Okay, but since I'm here, can I just finish it?
Yeah, go ahead and finish.
Okay.
I would defer to the city attorney on that.
We are in the discretion to allow him to finish now.
Yeah.
All right.
Go ahead.
Can I... Do I still have one minute?
The video could just reset to one minute. I think he had one minute left there.
So the people participated in the survey, 87% agreed on a measure to reduce the spending, which is to go back staff per 1,000 residents to fiscal year, 2014 to 15-year level. So below is our chart. Could you please project it? As you can see, in last 10 years, our staff per 1,000 residents level keeps going up. And we, if we go it down to the beginning of the year, and it will be... yeah, we'll can almost balance the budget. And this is a result, and most of the results, the new taxes were rejected and didn't get any support, but except the new hotel tax. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one additional person on Zoom. Call on user one. You'll need to unmute yourself.
Dear council and guests and members, and we actually previously was... through a third party to settle the matter without any cost to move on. And surprisingly, actually without no notice, and this outside the... this city outside law firm taken unprecedented step of obtaining a court order that the message they left within 24 hours included a tariff fee and doubled the initial cost, and that alarming turn of events has left us in a state of immediate stress and the privation of our rights. And it's like a form of retaliation. We were just... we were actually, after the city to settle, and this is immediately happened right after that, after we tried to lost the property in Ballany without notice, we kindly request that your assistance in seeking out for community and raising awareness about unfair treatment we are currently facing, the action taken by the city's law firm, and not only unjustified force to serve further, give us all these rights. And for additional details, please, to discuss the potential avenue for resolution, please contact the outside law firm, and the number 415-527272. Actually, the city legal team, they're the one actually, according to the law firm, is the one behind it too. So the person doing it is Melanie Dillinger, and then his boss, Peja, and your prompt attention to this matter would be greatly appreciated, and we urge you to please justify this situation and restore the justice. And thank you for all your time and consideration. And thank you.
Thank you, mayor. That was our final speaker.
Okay, moving on. The consent calendar. Madam City Manager, has there... Have any items been pulled?
Yes, mayor. Item six was pulled by Councilmember Chow.
Are there any comments on the consent calendar other than item number six, which will be taken up at the end of the action calendar?
Mayor, I have no additional cards, other than there is one person that would like to speak for six, which is, it's been moved to after-action calendar. I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. So is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar? Councilmember Wei?
I move adopt of consent calendar three, four, five, and seven.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Let's vote by lights.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we... There are no public hearings, so we moved on to the action calendar. And the subject is, it's item number eight. Potential November 2024 revenue tax measure opinion research. And this recommended action is to forego opinion polling and additional efforts at a November 2024 revenue generating ballot initiative. I see there is a staff report.
Thank you, mayor. So this is a item coming back to council, following council's instruction from the previous study session. We have a brief presentation and also staff report prepared by finance team. I will walk you through. Staff recommendation is to forego any of the ballot measure for this year, but Christiane and her team can go into detail. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm Thomas Leung, Budget Manager, here to present the potential November 2024 revenue tax measure opinion research. Video, can we show the presentation? So I'll start by talking about the business community survey and outreach that we worked on, as well as business engagement results, the November ballot landscape, and finally our recommendations and next steps. In December, staff sought council direction to explore the feasibility of potential revenue tax measures in alignment with the city's current work program. Council decided to revisit the issue and directed staff to engage the business community regarding these measures. Staff conducted three forms of outreach, an online survey, small focus group meetings, and individual meetings. These meetings and surveys had a mixed result with an overwhelming, or mostly a negative Here are the results. The city received 112 responses. Forty-three and a half percent of the surveyed businesses supported a revenue tax measure, but most of these measures had less than 50% support, except for the transient occupancy tax or TOT. And three potential ballot measures could complicate the November ballot, making it challenging to introduce a local tax measure. This ballot complexity can lead to confusion and an increase in no votes. First of all, with Assembly Constitutional Amendment 13, that one raises the threshold for any potential tax measures. Assembly Constitutional Amendment 1, or ACA 1, that is related to general obligation bonds and special taxes, which lowers the threshold from 2/3 to 55% for any infrastructure project funding. And finally, the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act broadens the definition of taxes, and any tax measures that do not comply with this act could potentially become void. Because of this complexity, staff advises against any opinion research at this time. And so the recommendation is to forego opinion polling and additional efforts at a November 2024 revenue generating ballot initiative. And if council supports this recommendation, then staff would seize any efforts at any revenue tax measure. Thank you, and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Thomas. This portion is for council members to ask questions of the staff, and you have up to five minutes per council member. Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the report. I just wanted to clarify that the 2% to 3% transient occupancy tax is added to the 12% that we currently have, and it's not... You don't take the 12% times 2 or 3% and have a really small increase. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Chow?
Thank you. Just to clarify, so for the hotel occupancy tax, does that require a ballot measure to increase?
Yes.
So that also require ballot measure? Okay, and I think a question I asked in... Before the meeting, it wasn't completely answered, so I'll try again. So we heard that the county is looking into likely putting on a sales tax major in November ballot, and it might use up the remaining 2... A quarter percent sales tax Cupertino has. And so that would prevent the city to use... To utilize that health, that quarter percent of sales tax. So... But the other cities probably has already raised their sales tax percentage to the highest limit. So I'm just wondering if the county puts on such major, would Cupertino residents, whenever we buy something, we actually would be contributing more to the county than other cities? So this is what I'd like to clarify.
Sure. Through the mayor, if I may. Thank you, Councilmember Chow, for that question. So we actually provided an informational memo to your question, and the answer, I call it, is it depends. So we are not sure if the county is going to go through...
The information memo didn't really answer that question. This is... Yeah. On the fairness to Cupertino residents.
I don't think that is a question that we can answer. So it depends. If the county is going to take what's remaining, yes, that will be taken by the county if the ballot measure goes through, and if the Accountability Act is failed. So there are a lot of what-ifs and a lot of hypothetical questions. We can do the best we can, but to answer a straight... To provide you a straight answer, if the county does do that, yes, we will be losing that, assuming these other measures that we brought to council's consideration fail.
I mean, assuming that... Let's not assume anything about the November ballot for the majors that the staff mentioned in the report. My... What I really try to understand is, for example, I don't know what's the highest tax right now for Sunnyvale. Just for example, maybe they already raised their sales tax to take up the remaining 0.25% and Cupertino didn't. And let's say, assuming the county major passed in November, and assuming no one challenges whether it's valid or not, or any other ballot measure might affect that, then does that mean Cupertino residents would always be contributing 0.25% more in our sales tax to the county than Sunnyvale? This is what I don't understand.
I think I will probably need to get back to you. There's a lot of hypothetical that the questions came to us late. I will be frank, this is not my expertise area, so I will need to talk to staff and also provide a follow-up response to you.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Wei?
Not to be hypothetical, I don't think the county has contemplated putting a quarter sales tax yet.
I don't know.
Yeah, but as far as I know, I haven't heard anything that a county might do a quarter sales tax. Okay, I'm not asking you a question. I'm just saying that... Okay, so I think I understand Councilmember Chow's question, and... Okay, I am...
I had one question. For the TOT, do other cities have... Have they included like a CPI increase to sort of circumvent the ballot measure? Do you know of any city that does that?
No. If they did have a CPI measure, I believe that would have to been included with their original motion, with their original ballot measure, to say this is how it's going to increase. Otherwise, they'd have to go back to secure that additional amount.
Okay. And we didn't have that. Thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. I had submitted a list of the general fund taxes, which we have in the municipal code, and I was trying to understand how much revenue is being generated from each one. And I was... Perhaps we can receive a memo so that we have all these. So that's the business license tax, documentary stamp tax, the uniform local sales and use tax, the transient occupancy tax, and the construction tax, and the utility users excise tax, and the telecommunication users tax. And I think there might be one more in there regarding storm drains, and that there could be some in other chapters that I've missed. But I was trying to find out all of those, and then somewhat linked to that are the various franchises, which we have. Looks like five of them that I could count within the municipal code. So if that could be provided as a memo to us, since we're having a discussion about having potential, at some point, tax, we should probably know the whole array of taxes which the city has now. And I found it pretty educational just looking at the ones that I could find. So I think we would all benefit with some more information about that, if possible. Thank you.
So the information, I... Sorry for the late question, but I only got information about this and, say, spotlight news story about county contemplating this potential ballot major in November after the deadline to submit the first set of question. So therefore, I submit late. But thank you for answering in the supplemental. The link of the news story is provided in the supplemental. And then my question... So I hope that I could still get the answer to my question on the fairness to Cupertino's later in the report, because Cupertino is already contributing a higher percentage of our property tax to the county than any other city. So I don't want us to also be treated unfairly on the sales tax. And since the county is contemplating that, I wonder if it's possible for the council maybe consider to send a letter to advocate against this increase, and maybe express any... If there is any unfair treatment, I think we should speak up for our residents in this potential, maybe a letter from the council to the county supervisors. Thank you.
So Councilmember Chow, that is your time. And so, you know, any letter to county supervisors would be a separate item that we would need to agendize for future discussion.
Oh, sorry. Okay, are we ready for public comments?
Yes, mayor, we have two cards in Community Hall from Jennifer Griffin and Rhoda Frye. Long Zhao already provided comments under oral communications. Anyone wishing to comment on the side, and please have your hand raised virtually, or a speaker card submitted in the next nine minutes.
Good evening, city council. It's interesting about the sales tax, because I helped...
It's interesting about the sales tax, because I helped my 91-year-old mother with her ballot on Monday. It has been mailed. She's in Santa Cruz County, in the county. And Santa Cruz County is anticipating floating, they, she actually voted on it, was one of the measures of whether to raise their sales tax or not. I did not realize that cities in the county, I, I'm, I don't fully understand what you all were talking about Sunnyvale taking up part of the sales tax in the county. I don't understand how that works. It doesn't sound like it's fair. And I, you know, I, Cupertino has been beaten up in the last five years. I don't want to pay anything to Sunnyvale. I, I think Sunnyvale has been a horrible city. They have been very, very abusive of Cupertino. I, I don't want our citizens to be paying more sales tax than Sunnyvale. And if Sunnyvale ran out, grabby, grabby, and took, somehow managed to get out there and deceive their public and got a sales tax increase for themselves, then it's not fair. And they should be held accountable for it. They're, they're trying to take away something from the rest of the county, and they're not the only city in the county. So I think that we need to have an investigation into this, because I did hear that Sunnyvale was trying to raise their sales tax. I had always believed that every city could have their own sales tax. And especially with what the, the state is just dumping on Cupertino and Apple. And I, I really feel very, very strongly about this, that Cupertino needs to protect itself, because there are vicious people and cities around us. I don't feel comfortable with the way things are progressing in the county and, and the state, because I think Cupertino, everyone wants to like get us. I don't know what their problem is, you know? What did we do to them? And I hope President Biden is listening to this. I am, I am really appalled at some of the things that the state is doing to other cities. Beverly Hills, it's like HCD is just out. They hate everybody in this state. All they want to do is take all their land and rezone it. Yeah, that's, that is the abuse that the public has taken for the last five years. And I don't want Cupertino to suffer anymore. I love this city, and I don't want it to be taken advantage of by other cities. It's not fair. We need to find out exactly what Cupertino is allowed to do, and we need to get our piece in the pie, because everybody takes advantage of it.
Jennifer, that is your time. Next, we have Rhoda Frye, followed by Luis Sedati. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi. With respect to the county grab for the sales tax, that has actually been discussed right here on this day, even when Rod Sings was, was here. So it's, it's not new. And I also wanted to underscore what Councilmember Moore spoke about, that the people who were surveyed might have been confused when they talked about the two to three percent increase in the hotel tax. It actually would have been like a 25% increase in sales tax. And as you know, Mr. Bono is affiliated with Cupertino Hotel balked at that and then said that we, you know, we would, we would actually lose tax, because they'd lose client, the hotels would lose clients. Anywho, short message is, but I'm going to, of course, say more, as always, but the short message is, yes, we should forego this opinion polling and any additional efforts. And I also want to commend staff for just saying, okay, let's put a stop to it, let's save some money here. But at the end of the day, it's moving forward. If you all want to raise taxes, the public needs to be sure, assured that our city finances are really well understood. And I also want to underscore what Son had said earlier during oral communications, that it just doesn't seem like we're cutting in all the places that we need to cut and that the residents are being unfairly burdened. I do appreciate that the Open Gov portal was updated to eliminate some open jobs that didn't exist, but you know, there's more work to do, like explaining why there's a discrepancy of about $10 million, because the gross sales tax was shown, but it was called the net sales tax, a little bit confusing there. And also, why, when we refinanced our debt, I believe back in 2020, we were told that our interest rate was actually going to go down, and we were at 3%. But in fact, it actually went up to 4%, by, to 4%, that's a, that's a 30% increase. And so, you know what? That's not okay. But to this, to this topic, I also remain dismayed that the city entered into a contract with Team Civic X LLC to conduct revenue measure polling and consulting services for this tax measure, in a contract not to exceed 170K before council agreed that the city should consider the sales tax measure. You know, the agreement was signed on November 6th, but the council meeting to make that decision didn't happen until December 5th. And that's not okay, because we want you to be, we elect you to be our leaders and to give direction to staff, not vice versa. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Rhoda. And our final speaker in Community Hall is Luis Sedati. Welcome, Luis. And then we will move to our virtual, hands raised.
Hello. I'm Luis Sedati. I just wanted to say that I disagreed with the comment that was made that Sunnyvale was taking advantage of Cupertino. I think Jennifer Griffin said that. And I just wanted to highlight that Sunnyvale, I think, council can correct me if I'm wrong, but Sunnyvale had a higher sales tax than we did, and they were up to the maximum allowed sales tax. And Cupertino was like a quarter percent or something like that below what Sunnyvale had. And now the county has a measure up that they're, they're precluding us raising our sales tax as high as what was allowable, because they are stepping in and, and taking that tax, that extra tax. But you all can explain it further. But I think I have been astonished at how well Sunnyvale has done. They have a brand-new city hall, they have all this money coming into the city, they have all these businesses coming in that have been collecting tremendous amounts of taxes. And they also had an empty lot in their city that San Hill, the developer, was part of. And because the bank got involved in a bankruptcy, there was a whole lawsuits and all that. But, and they had a big empty lot, similar to what we have. But Sunnyvale organized itself as a city towards smart development. And they worked with a developer, and they built a lovely, wonderful, gorgeous downtown that frankly, I'm just jealous of, because they have a brand-new city hall, all these businesses rolling in, all this money. And as you know, I am part of trying to get DOLAs started and also helping Sunnyvale do that. They have $75,000 that they're spending just to study starting DOLAs there. And we spent $5,000 in Cupertino to, to do our, our DOLAs. Kudos to Michelle for being the director of Parks and Rec for being so efficient. But we did all that with $5,000. So, so basically, a developer is not a swear word. Developer can help to build an empty lot into something that produces a lot of tax. And we can nitpick and go negative and find all these things, but we need to come together to find solutions to move our city forward, because frankly, I'm jealous of Sunnyvale. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. And we have three hands that are raised on Zoom, two of the colors, I'm not sure if there were an artifact of the previous item, but I will call on you, call on user one and San R. Call on user one, are you calling to speak on item eight? And you'll need to unmute yourself. Okay, so you may be having technical difficulties. I'll move to San R. Welcome, San. Are you speaking on item eight?
Yes, I am. Good evening, council and Mayor Sheila. Can the public expect to hear from you after this meeting tonight on why the staff decided to survey the business community but not residents? I understand that the taxes equally apply to both residents and the business community. The partial tax and the TOT would have had an impact on residents. Why is it that we chose to survey the business community and not residents? I believe in the council meeting when this was first originally discussed, some council members did provide feedback that the community should be surveyed and there's not been enough feedback on the community. And it seems like that feedback turned into a survey for the business community. I hope council members will do the due diligence to follow up on how it came about, that staff decided that residents were somehow less important and their opinion mattered less than the opinion of the business community. Now, having said that, the business community thankfully understands residents far better than maybe some of the other stakeholders. The business community understands that when you raise taxes, residents go elsewhere. It's a short drive from here to Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, Saratoga, Los Altos, or Los Catos. And you can pay far less for any service when you go to Santa Clara or Sunnyvale, or, or even further to any other city, such as San Jose. And so it doesn't cost residents much. And so I urge you to stop thinking about taxing residents, because it is, it is really easy to make that choice. Secondly, I just want to call out, it's important to understand how much we paid the consultant UFI. It would be nice to get that data as well, because that money could have been used instead to fund the Zoom option that we've been asking for, for so long, for these public meetings. I do hope you will look at curtailing the discretionary spend of staff on these study projects, because we are spending money in, in the order of tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, on study projects and consultants. There's absolutely no reason that we should be looking at taxes when we can cut costs and achieve that and more. And, and finally, I do want to add that the, the approval to the consultant ahead of council direction, if the, if the prior resident could, was correct in saying that, then that's a serious matter that I would request the mayor and council members to look into. I hope council is giving direction on these items before they're actually moving forward. As always, these agreements are public record and can be looked at to see the dates where these contracts are signed. And I hope you are going to enforce most stringently that without council direction, staff not move forward on these spend items, because we are dealing with a tough time, we're dealing with reduction in our received sales tax, and we need to make sure that we watch every dollar we spend. And thank you for your discretion there.
Thank you, San. And next, we have Srividya. And then we'll try call on user one, once again. Welcome, Srividya.
Hi, good evening, council members. I wanted to add my voice to citizens who are concerned about items on the budget that seem to be unnecessary spending at a time when we have a budget deficit. So this-
Can we interrupt you? This is not about the budget. We are specifically talking about item number eight, which is about revenue tax measures.
I'm aware, Mayor Sheila, thank you. So my point was that while you're thinking about increasing tax, I think the bigger issue is that you need to be looking also at spending, the unnecessary spending, which is leading to a budget deficits. And then you end up with having to raise taxes and other things that will have a negative impact on our community. And as the speaker before me alluded to, it's just going to end up that we will have to look for better services for the money we spend in other cities around here. And we definitely, I guess, we, that's not a direction we want to go. So I would urge you to not only think about raising taxes all the time, but look at the other side of it, which is how can we save money so that we don't have to go in for increased taxation? Okay, that was my point. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will try calling user one, one last time.
I don't know, who informed it?
Call on user one, you'll need to unmute yourself. They lowered their hand, Mayor, so, so no further speakers on this item.
Okay, so the public comment section is concluded. Thank you to all the speakers who participated this evening. Okay, I'd like to bring the matter back to our council. And for the purpose of starting a discussion, I'd like to have a motion. Is there a motion?
Councilmember Wei.
So I'll move that we, the council, accept the recommended action of staff to forego opinion polling and additional efforts at the November 2020 for revenue generating ballot[1550.98][1550.99]initiative.
Okay, is there a second? Councilmember Moore?
More seconds?
All right. So we have a motion and a second. And let's start discussions. Councilmember Chow, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. On to, I looked at the December 5th meeting minutes, it took from my memory at the time. I proposed a friendly amendment, so the staff did not act on their own in this case. It was the council direction to direct the staff to engage the business community to conduct surveys. At the time, I made a friendly amendment to consider a resident survey also in addition to the outreach to the business community. It was rejected by the mover and on the item, I abstained, but the item passed. So the, the staff was, is, in this case, following the council direction. And I, I hope that we get more clarification from the county and also get more information about sales tax for, for the cities in Santa Clara County, so we get a clear picture in case this happens. Is Cupertino being disadvantaged? If that's so, maybe the city, maybe we could have an item on the council agenda to maybe write a letter to the county supervisors to maybe advocate on behalf of Cupertino. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Fruen? Oh, what's she, what's, Councilmember Moore?
Right, thank you. I, I would like to understand the statement about the, the contract being signed prior to the city council meeting. So if, if perhaps we could have a, if someone would like to speak to that now or, or provide us with a memo after the meeting, after it's been looked at, I'd like to hear about that. I do agree with the member of the public that we need to look at the budget very closely, and it is our fiduciary duty. I know that takes time during the meetings, and people don't always enjoy that, having to look at the numbers very, very closely and all of the various revenue sources that we have and expenditures and, but I, it's something that we definitely need to do. So our financial picture has changed, and we need to address that. I want to thank staff for coming forward with this presentation and the recommendation that we forego the opinion polling and not put this on, on the ballot this year. But for me, an additional reason is that I want us to be really studying the budget and making sure that we don't have things in there that are no longer necessary, that we can remove perhaps. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Fruen?
So to address some of the concerns that were raised with respect to what sort of outreach was done, to piggyback off of the commentary from Councilmember Chow, if you review the minutes from the December 5th meeting, you will see that the motion was as follows, it was to delay any polling on the question of any specific revenue measure, two, to conduct outreach to the business community on the potential revenue measures, and three, to return to council early in the new year to report back on the findings of outreach to the business community and to receive further direction. Now- Now, the whole reason that this was originally on our agenda was about conducting polling to the public. And we did not want to expend the money that was being allotted for it without having first discussed this issue with the business community that had not yet been canvassed and which frankly could mount a challenge to it and make it more difficult to pass. So I think that we have saved considerable amounts of money and have reached the same conclusion. Therefore, I would encourage anybody who is concerned about what sort of outreach was done to go back and look at what happened on December the 5th and why those motions were made. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
I want to clarify, I did have no, I didn't really say Sunnyvale because I have any specific knowledge about Sunnyvale sales tax. It could be just a city XYZ in Santa Clara County. I threw out Sunnyvale as an example. So I have, they may or may not have maximum amount of sales tax, but I'm guessing at least one of the cities in Santa Clara has maxed their sales tax. So I would like to know then what's, what's our, would we be disadvantaged? So just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Let's go back to our motion. We have a motion. We have a second. We have no other discussions, so let's vote by light.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I request a short recess, about a three minute?
Three minutes, okay.
Okay, five minutes.
Five minutes. Okay, we're all back from recess. And we can, we'll get started with item number nine. Accept the city manager's mid-year financial report for fiscal year 2324. And do we have a staff report to us, Madam City Manager?
Yes, Mayor Mohan, thank you. As promised, we're coming back to you every council meeting with a budget update. So Christina and her team will be presenting the mid-year budget to you. And Thomas has a brief presentation and we're asking council to accept the report. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I will take the first portion of this report and then I will hand it off to Thomas. If the video team could just share Thomas's screen for the presentation, thank you. So we do have a brief presentation. We're going to go over the fiscal year 2324 mid-year update. This will be focused on the general fund. And we do that historically with our presentations to council. This is where you have the most discretion. However, if you would like additional information on all of the other funds in the city, we do include that write-up as part of the mid-year staff report. Then Thomas, I'll hand it over to Thomas to go over the proposed budget adjustments and then covering recommendations before council this evening and next steps. So when we look at the 2023-2024 budget update, the first thing we're going to start with is really related to how did we get to our current amended budget number? So you may recall back in June, council adopted a general fund budget. So I just want to point out, this is focused on the general fund only. A general fund budget of $86.1 million with revenues of $80.3 million. As part of the year-end close process and in the first quarter report, we went ahead and included any encumbrance carryovers or budget carryovers along with any council adjustments from July 1 through September 30, 2023. And we brought you that budget for first quarter in the second meeting of November. And there were, there are current attachments, I believe attachment C, in the mid-year report this evening that also existed with the first quarter report, kind of outlining what those carryover encumbrances or city council approvals were. Between the second meeting in November and this evening, there's been about a half a million dollars worth of adjustments that have occurred. And those are really just related to the adjustments that council approved as part of first quarter. So those have been incorporated, which gets us to our current amended budget as of December 31, 2023 of $122.3 million with estimated revenues of $113.3 million. So now we want to, kind of covering revenues and expenses and we want to cover fund balance a little bit. I'm not going to go over kind of everything in this chart, but I do want to explain a little bit about fund balance. We understand there's been some confusion because the number 140 million has been thrown out. This evening, we're saying we're estimating year-end fund balance to be 126.8 million. And I think there's a misunderstanding about kind of this pot of dollars and what we can do with it and how that impacts our budget situation or our budget deficit. So the first thing I will say is we have a red bar around the unassigned and we have it there because this is really the pot of money if council wanted to allocate. This is the dollars they could allocate in the budget. They could also, in the committed category, uncommit some of these items. There is a downside to that, which is if you uncommit those dollars, free them up and spend them, if something happens, there's another economic downturn, there's the sales tax for payment reserve, right? If that goes down, but we have to pay it, we'd have to figure out how to fund that. So there's a risk in uncommitting some of these funds. I think a really, for me, a simple way to look at it is think about it as your own, like checking account and pretend it's payday. And you just looked at your checking account and it looks great, right? But you know you have other obligations. You know you have your mortgage, you have your car payment, utilities, whatever it may be, right? You're going to have to spend those down. And in this case, really, you also know, hey, on the horizon, I know I'm going to be bringing in less money. And I'm not only bringing in less money, but I'm bringing in less money to cover my expenses, right? That means I either need to figure out how to bring in more money or I need to figure out how to reduce my expenses, which is exactly what the city has been doing since proposed budget last fiscal year, right? Is trying to figure out what is that balance between what can I reduce and how can I bring in more dollars? And so, yes, on paper, it says we have 140 million, 140.6 million. That's where we ended the year. The reality is a bulk of those funds have been earmarked for other purposes. Some of them are also restricted, so we can only be used in a specific way. But we hope that that's kind of a general, kind of an easier explanation of how fund balance works. And so really, again, what we're looking at is as we're looking to potential adjustments this evening or other adjustments that council might make in the future, or even when we're looking at the proposed budget, anything that's over our revenues that we're estimating to come in, the way we're going to cover that deficit is likely with that 26 million that's listed there. That's kind of our, if we're short, that's where we're going to go for it. And again, it's one-time money, so it can't solve our ongoing problem because our ongoing problem is structural. So with that, I'm going to spend a little more time on the sales tax payment reserve before handing this back over to Thomas. So as you may recall, council approved the allocation of 56.5 million in disputed sales tax revenue that was received by the city between April 1, 2021 and June 30, 2023. At that time, we said we would come back to council quarterly to update this reserve as we went along the fiscal year. Our report indicates that we received an additional 3.8 million. So this is covering basically the July through September sales tax. We've yet to receive the final numbers on October through December. But we do not have a recommendation before you this evening to increase that reserve just yet. We'll actually be doing that as part of third quarter. And the main reason behind it is in order to increase this reserve, we need to increase our sales tax revenue. We would like to get that last quarter of the calendar year, which is the holiday shopping quarter, to get a better sense of where we think we need to move that tax number to be able to move those dollars over. So we wanted to report on what the number would be and then come back at third quarter and make that, and request that adjustment from council. So with that, that wraps up my portion of the presentation and I will hand it over to Budget Manager Liang to take you through the remaining.
Thank you, Director Alfaro. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'll now be covering the proposed budget adjustments. This quarter, we have two adjustments. The first one is to our utility user tax. This is an increase to the revenue by 795,000. And this is to align the revenues with the increase in rates being charged to customers by Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And this will result in increased tax revenue for the city. The second proposal is to account for the hidden treasures proceeds. Revenue from hidden treasures will be 12,414. 2,357 is already accounted for in the budget, but we're requesting to increase expenditures by 10,000. And this 10,000 will be used for the stay active fund. In total, revenues will increase by 807,000 and expenditures would increase by 10,000. As a result, fund balance would increase by 797,000. Next, in terms of staffing, no changes are recommended this quarter. We also provide an update on the city manager's discretionary fund. As of December 31, no funds have been spent, but we'll continue to report on the use of this fund every quarter. Finally, I'll talk about recommendations and next steps. Our recommendation is to accept the city manager's mid-year financial report for fiscal year 202324, as well as adopt a resolution increasing appropriations by 10,000 and revenues by 807,000. And then this, as you've seen before, is a roadmap to the fiscal year 202425 budget adoption. As City Manager mentioned, we are providing an update on the budget every single month. Recently, you heard about the revenue tax measures update. Currently, we're talking about a mid-year budget update. We also have a community budget meeting scheduled for later this month. And then in March, we also have a CIP budget update. In April, another community budget meeting, another budget update in April on service level reductions. And then finally, third quarter in May, proposed budget study session in May. And just diving into some more detail, the community budget meeting is scheduled for next week, February 29 in Community Hall, 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. This is a hybrid meeting, so we'll be having an in-person as well as a virtual option. And we'll also be doing outreach, promoting this in the Cupertino newsletter, as well as doing a social media push next week. In addition, our second budget update is tentatively scheduled for April 3. And our community budget meeting is, our second one is tentatively in April, but location and time are TBD. Thank you, and we look forward to your questions.
Okay, I invite the council to ask questions of staff. And thank you, Director Alfaro and Manager Liang. Councilmember Moore? You have five minutes.
Okay. Thank you very much for the, for the report and for the prep session that we had and also previous meeting to help, help me understand the budget better. And I still have some more questions. With regards to the encumbrance carryovers, what exactly does this mean in, within attachment C, the description is the year-end soft close? Is that, are there, are there various, like for the storm drain improvement, year-end soft close, we have 1.6 million. I'm going to assume that that means that there are multiple projects. There's just not enough room to list them all here. So you're giving us like a lump sum for that? Am I close to correct?
So no, so a soft close refers to a process that happens in our financial system, which means we look at all open purchase orders at the time. We work with the departments to determine which ones need to be carried over in the system or not. When the soft close occurs, that carries over those open encumbrances into the new year or the open POs into the new year.
Okay, so I sort of outright, just using some different language. So the open purchase orders would be anything that's not already showing up in the budget carryovers on the previous pages? Okay, okay, I'm starting to get it. And then I was curious, how, how far back did some of these budget carryovers go? Like, how many years back are they? I'm going to assume that some of these are special projects. Some are, look like they're work program items as well. What, is there anything else that they might be? And then how, how far back do they go?
Generally, we try to limit the carryovers to a two to three-year period. However, when you're looking at CIP projects or maybe some council work program, projects that may go over several years, you may see them go further for things that are more like, we were going to repair this one thing and we haven't done it, right? We might say, hey, you've had two years to do this. Is it really going to get done? Are we going to carry it over? But other projects are just multi-year by nature, and so we need to wait for those projects to kind of come to fruition until we continue to carry them over until that happens.
Okay, and how, how does a project get off this list?
So it would get off this list either at year end. They'd say this project has been completed and we're not going to carry it over, or there's no encumbrance to carry over. So those are your two, two options, potentially as well as part of any of the quarterly reports or as part of a work program update. If something was said to be, want to come off the list, we do a budget action to defund it at that time.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember A.
So I think you explained it. There was a little bit of confusion of how much we have so much money left over. So if I understand it correctly, there are a lot of CIP project and workload project, we carry over the money because the project hasn't been closed. For example, the library's extension is still on it because it has some things that haven't been done. So when it's all done, either we consolidate whatever money left over, go back into general fund, or if there's not enough money, you might come back to the council, ask for money. Is that how the process goes?
So correct, if there's not enough money, we would need to come back to the city council. However, if there's extra left over, we review how the project was funded and then determine where the remaining fund should go.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Chow, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for providing separate document for the CIP project update. It's great to see that. I'm hoping that there is dollar amount for each of the projects so that I don't have to look them up for the future update. That would be very helpful. And I think I would be curious that how much is allocated for each project, how much is spent, how much is remaining? That would be of interest. And thank you for another separate document for the different competitive grants. It's good to see that we have received so many grants. And then this one provided the beginning date and the ending date of these grants. That's really good information. And, and there's some other thing that I was looking for, but I couldn't find it, is someone brought up the use of below-market rate funding. So I wonder, do, would we expect to have accounting of this funding in any, in the next update or it will be a separate discussion?
A little more clarification on the question on the-
BMR funding or like Parkland funding?
You mean in terms of what, what has been spent and what has-
Yeah, what do we have in the, what's our balance? What's being spent for this kind of funding?
So there's a, there's a couple of places. There's the AB 1600 report, which talks about what's been received and what's been spent or allocated is one spot. And then, as I mentioned in the staff report, there is also kind of a report on what's happening with the different special funds, although it talks about it in more in a total of all the special funds. So BMR is part of our special revenue funds. But Open Gov is another good location. You could look up specific budget, program budgets and you can see either budget to actuals, revenues versus expenditure, just a lot of different views there as well.
So it's under special funds?
Yeah, special, special revenue funds.
Oh, because I see a document, a spatial project, so that's a different thing.
Correct.
Yeah. And then I think there were question about some of these BMR fund seems to be allocated to paying for lawsuit. So is that true or is, and when, where can we see that allocation of this funding and the reasoning purpose for those? When would we, where would we find that?
So we can address that question offline, Councilmember Chow. I don't think that's, that's within the scope of this item that's been agendized.
So this item has documents on the different funding, different projects. So that particular fund is not within the scope because?
Because we're discussing the budget and not specific invoices.
Okay.
Certainly happy to address that question with you offline.
So Councilmember Chow, we got your questions on both this item and also the AP item number six. We will provide a follow-up to you offline because it's not germane to either of the items. But your questions are well received and I will definitely provide a follow-up.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, let's open it for public comments on item number nine, which is the mid-year financial report. Are there any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have two requests to speak in Community Hall from Jennifer Griffin and Peggy Griffin. And I see four hands raised virtually. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please have your hand raised or speaker card submitted in the next nine minutes. Thank you.
Each speaker has three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. It's always interesting to see all the different budget things. I'm glad you all talked about when- I'm glad you all talked about when the new meetings were coming up in March and April, because I'm used to seeing these reports go through, and it's good to have public input. Of course, Cupertino is supposed to be in some sort of a budget problem, thanks to, I'm going to dump on California again. Anyway, I, I, we were, I just want to make a comment. We saw too much of the rise all week. Every single news outlet was overburdened with the rise. Even on KCBS radio, when I was trying to drive to Santa Cruz to find out if there were accidents on 17, I heard about the rise. I want to make sure in this budget that Cupertino is not paying for infrastructure of the Rise Valco. It's a big project. It's been going on many years. I remember when it was first announced, the property had been purchased about 10, 12 years ago. I, I think that we need to make sure that the city is not incurring and being forced to pay infrastructure by developers. I'm not blaming anyone here, but based on what has been happening with the housing laws by Senator Weiner and some other folks, they are trying to force cities to pay for infrastructure to make things pencil out for developers. I don't want Cupertino to go that route. We have our own problems. We're not here to subsidize developers. A lot of them can get their own money, but when it comes to paying for the infrastructure issues, I want them to pay their fair share. Because as far as I'm concerned with HCD and the housing element, that we're getting taken for a ride. Our land is being stolen from us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Mohan, council members and staff. I'd like to use the overhead if possible. I understand, I went through Attachment C, and there were some items that confused me. The Memorial Park Pond repurposing. I understand that the carryovers are things that you haven't completed, but these are done. If this money is just sitting there because someone didn't close it, then it should be closed to be, and the money redistributed. The bike plan implementation, 8.6 million. I don't understand, we, we reduced the number of projects, and if they were in the budget, why are we carrying over 8.6? It seems like it ought to be reduced. The City Hall, Community Hall improvements, I like that. I'm concerned because the next item, City Hall Annex, I heard the city manager stopped it at 1.9. So if that's not being done, I'm worried that the EOC or the Command Center, if it's still in City Hall, is City Hall going to be safe enough? And the basketball courts at Wilson, I thought they were completed. Library expansion, somebody said maybe it was landscaping. I don't know. But, and the protected bike way on Mary, 49K. And then still items for hiring staff. So if some of these items are truly closed, then move the money, please. And if the carryover for the bike is stuff that shouldn't be carried over because we're not going to do it now, defund it, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, good evening again. Very much appreciate Peggy's comments and also Councilmember Moore's thorough look at this item, which can be seen online. I submitted my comments in writing. I'll go over them quickly. There's a couple of things that stuck out to me. I didn't see any funds for the Art in Lou, and we had the funds that were earmarked for this whirligig at Jollyman Park, but there was also money left over. So just wondering what's going on with the Art in Lou money. Also dismayed to see that the city has continued to increase staffing in spite of budget shortfalls, and, and also just rampant spending. Also want to echo about the EOC, Emergency Operations Center at City Hall. Let's just get this, let's just make that building at least seismically safe, if not up to standards for an EOC. This is, this issue is getting a little long on the tooth. And also with respect to mitigation fees, at the end of the day, is, they typically, you know, the city doesn't make money on mitigation fees. Mitigation fees rarely, you know, completely pay for themselves, particularly when we're looking at below-market rate housing. There was a presentation that the city actually paid for, for one of its consultants. They really discussed that our BMR fees don't cover, don't cover the mitigation. And finally, I also want you to understand that, you know, we're being told that there's a $30 million shortfall, and that really needs to be taken into context. So at one point, we did have an extraordinary sales tax windfall during COVID. But really, in general, we were, our net sales tax income was closer to 24 million. So to have a $30 million deficit in a normal situation, it doesn't quite work. So I'd appreciate it if, if, if staff could show, try to sort of couch the numbers or really get down and explain exactly where the deficit is. And at the end of the day is, in the past, we were actually saving money. We had a lot of unassigned funds and contingencies, and, and, and we were also putting money in the bank. So if we're not doing those things, you know, it's not, it's not, it's bad, but it's not as bad as it looks. So I'd like to get some better communication in, in that area. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Rhoda. And there are four virtual attendees requesting to speak. San R., Sri, Nagarajan, and Deepa Mahendraker, and Tracy K. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Sheila and City Council. I would like to ask councilmembers and the mayor to please make sure that you give clear direction to staff that projects be looked at for defunding and cancellation. I'm concerned that we are going into the community meetings, and if there isn't clear guidance from council, it is possible that the surveys and community meetings will actually poll on a set of questions that the community really does not want to see. We have seen these surveys in the past. What the community would like to see surveyed are never questions that are asked, and a considerable amount of time goes into these community meetings to gain input. So we would like for councilmembers to stay ahead of this process, please, and give clear direction on what projects you would like to see cut so that costs are reduced. I understand you have a 15 million shortfall in, in revenues versus expenses that you need to close to balance the budget. As has been pointed out, you have carryover projects, and you have encumbrances, and you have the, the capital projects. And none of this should be taken as, taken for granted unless they're almost nearing completion, or entirely funded by federal grants or state grant. Everything else should be put on the table to be looked at for cuts, and we should not be speaking about encumbrances and carryover as if those are funds not be touched. You can defund any of those, and you can give council direction as the case may be. Let me give you some specific examples. You have carryover items such as 250,000 for the 5G project. You have the PR strategy project at 160,000, community surveys at 80,000, reconfiguring the city, city staff offices at 127,000. And the list goes on. And then there's the bike lane project that nearly 8 million or so, as, as the previous speaker was alluding to. We need to not let these costs carry forward from previous years when our finances were in a different state. This is not the, the same financial situation as it was three, four, five years ago when those projects were approved. These projects can be suspended, they can be canceled, and it is important that you give clear direction to staff reflecting the, the numerous public opinion you're getting in public comments and in written comments, that we want to see you cutting cost, not raising taxes and fees on residents. So I hope to see at the end of today and in offline sessions, clear direction to staff so that we don't end up in wasted time in community meetings that are surveying the wrong set of options. Keep also in mind that there are some community residents that have not started surveying the community.
Thank you, San. And next, we have Sri Nagarajan, followed by Deepa Mahendraker, followed by Tracy K. Welcome, Sri.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to give out a shout out to prior speakers, Peggy, Ronda, and Santosh, who raised issues about costs and, and the fact that we have to look at prior projects and suddenly defund them or reduce costs. I was concerned to hear from the staff that they could carry forward for up to two years for, for a completion of a project. I, I think that that seemed a little very, very long to keep things. But I think I like the suggestion that was made, that we should definitely reduce the, defund or reduce projects that were approved prior but that haven't been completed so that we can get a better solvent financial picture. I, I also wanted to make a suggestion is, given the shortfalls that have been talked about, could we reduce city staff discretionary spending limits from 175,000 to say 30,000, given the number of projects that the staff has approved for study? Especially, I'm concerned about consultant spending, and this could be a way we could rein in costs to give out to consultants. So those were my points. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Sri. Next, we have Deepa Mahendraker, followed by Tracy K. Welcome, Deepa.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you. Dear councilmembers and city staff, I am here to kind of reiterate what you're hearing from many of the other residents and speakers, that we should look at cutting costs through some of the spending mechanisms we are looking at right now in the budget. Specifically, I want to speak to three points. Reduce the city staff discretionary spending limit from 175,000 to 30,000, given the number of projects that staff has approved for study and consultant spending. Second, please review carryovers and eliminate carryover for budget items no longer applicable. Be diligent about it. We have the Memorial Park Pond repurposing, Mary Avenue bike lanes, and so on. Again, I'm reiterating largely what many of, because have already in detail gone over. But please review that and eliminate anything that we really are not going to be spending on. Review past CIP projects and defund projects that we can no longer afford. It's a different financial situation, as has been pointed out. $500,000, a million for business continuity residence from economic development, bike lane project, and so on. Please review those. Please defund things that we can no longer afford so that the budget is more balanced and more sensible for the current year. That is all I had to share, and thank you.
Thank you, Deepa. And our final speaker will be Tracy K. Welcome, Tracy.
Thank you. Yeah, just some quick comments. I noticed that your amended budget went up from 204 million in the last update to 208 million. So I guess as a resident looking from the outside in, it's a little bit confusing because I thought we were trying to, you know, cut costs and solve the budget deficit. So to see the budget increasing is surprising, and it looks like that was largely due to increasing the CIP budget. So wondering, you know, why are we increasing when I thought we were supposed to be cutting? You know, we were cutting a lot of community services. We just cut sidewalk maintenance. So why is it that some categories continue to receive more spend and others do not? And also wanted to echo the comments on the carryovers in certain areas. You know, $8 million carrying over year over year for bike lanes? You know, is it responsible to be spending this type of money when we're at a deficit and our financials don't support it? Or, you know, maybe our financials do support it? And then in that case, the message to the community should be a little different. But as a whole, you know, is something like bike lanes, is that urgent right now? Can it wait? And then, you know, I see things like 150,000 to special PR strategy, you know, what is that? Why do we need that? Again, is it urgent? Can it be cut to help, you know, refund community items that have been cut? Just feels a little bit also like there's been an excessive focus on fund flows, so like raising your taxes or cutting ongoing expenses when there are, you know, sort of one-time capital projects and expenditures that could be cut? And meanwhile, the balance sheet looks strong. You know, I know it's a different agenda item, but, you know, if your Chandler account is increasing in value and investments are doing well, then can that money help technically go to close the deficit? So just some thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Mayor, no further speakers?
The public comments section has closed, and thank you to all the speakers who participated this evening. Let me bring it back to council for, ideally, I'd like to have a motion to adopt the resolution approving the budget modification. And if we could have a motion and a second, that'll help us focus on deliberations and further discussions. Is there a motion? Councilmember Wei?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. And let us start the discussions. Each one of us gets five minutes for these deliberations. Councilmember Moore?
I would actually like to make a substitute motion that we reconcile Attachment C with the special projects in the mid-year for fiscal year '23 to '24, because some may have been completed and need removal, and there may be some new recommended budget modifications for the city council to look at. And I would like the item to come back to council. I don't see, I don't see a legal requirement that we are in a hurry to do this at this time, but we can review those two sections because there are, if you look at special projects, this is not part of my motion, but if you look at special projects, you'll see that there's some missing information, missing dollar amounts for a number of items. Some have been completed, and if you go and do the accounting and follow it back to the Attachment C, you, you may find that it looks like some things do need to be removed there. So that is my substitute motion. Thank you.
Is there a second for the substitute motion?
I'll second.
Okay.
May I know exactly what is the substitute motion?
Councilmember Moore?
Okay, I, I don't know if, if the clerk has a, has it more concisely done, but it was to reconcile Attachment C with the special projects in mid-year '23 to '24, fiscal year '23, '24, because some are likely completed and need removal, and have it come back to council with that information and new recommended budget, new recommended budget modifications. So it would basically, for the subject for, for this item, it would, you, you'd be adding to item two. We would see some different budget modification numbers if, if indeed there are some items which need to be removed because they are completed, or they actually might need to have some more information. For instance, PDF 221, there's several special projects which have an amended budget column without any dollar amount associated to it, and some say they are completed, and some say they're in progress. Well, we should know what the budget amount is for, for each one of those. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Chow, is, are you seconding this?
Yes. I have some question about the special projects page that I hope it could be clarified. Maybe if it comes back.
What are we doing now? We have a motion, so let's vote on the substitute motion.
Can we discuss the motion first? I'd like to share the information I hope to have on the special projects page.
Okay. So are we talking about the substitute motion that Councilmember Moore made?
Point of order, we have a substitute motion and a motion on the floor. I believe council is in deliberations, and as Councilmember Chow is recognized to speak on those motions. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And again, we, each of us have five minutes for these deliberations.
Yeah. So this is on the second motion, right? And I think Councilmember Moore talked about potentially missing information. Maybe that has to do with my question. For example, a few of these special projects. First, I'd like to thank the staff for providing a column for budgeted amount, and I think this column, and the column for amount spent so far and the status. This, I wish the CIP project has a similar format so it's clear. So I am thankful for this format. I have a question regarding, for example, like this one. It says canceled, but the amount spent is not the full budgeted amount. So I might to understand that the difference is, might be a reduction in expenses since this project was canceled for this particular one.
So that is also in relation to a service level reduction, which council has not proceeded with, which is the Enterprise Resource Planning Software, or ERPR Financial and HR System. So it's tied to both of those. So if council were to defund the seven hundred and some thousand dollars, it was a service level reduction, this amount would go with it. However, if council were to choose to not defund that amount, this amount would stay with it. So it's tied to, you'll see it listed as phases. I think this was Phase Two and Phase Three. We've yet to have direction on what's happening with Phase Three.
Okay. So this project is not canceled yet.
Not yet. So maybe that's...
But maybe that adds to my confusion because I thought this is a mid-year financial report ending December 31st, and if it's not canceled yet, it shouldn't show up as canceled here until the council decide to cancel it, right?
Correct. So I think that's just semantics. We give departments only so many things they can put in that area, and we probably just need to expand it a little bit, given the budget situation that we're in, to have that flexibility to say, maybe under review.
So, yeah, something like that would be more clear. For example, I think the license plate reader that I read somewhere, can't find that. I think there was a license plate reader, and it was already canceled. Then I thought, oh, here is a license plate reader. I thought, didn't we have not made final decision on that? But here it also says canceled, so I'm confused. So that one also is not exactly canceled until the final decision from the council, right?
So through the mayor, if I may, so if council members, we bring you pages of service level reduction. During that meeting, we did not ask for an action from council, but we got direction. So council's direction is to stop or cancel certain projects that were listed on that matrix. So I think finance team took that instruction and reflected in this matrix. Council can't quite defund those projects until the budget is adopted in May or June timeframe, and that's why it says canceled, and we were, we're not going to spend any more money that has been previously allocated for this project. So I think that's where the confusion...
Okay. I totally didn't understand that because I think residents still want license plate reader, and in that meeting, I didn't realize there were some final decision being made. Then my question would be, supposedly, this item should be still in the budget from last year, but there is no budgeted amount. So I'm confused on this.
I don't believe there was any budgeted amount for the license plate work program item, but the ERP was budgeted. So in a certain, a small portion was budgeted.
I remember there was amount in the work program.
That was in the prior year. But we can definitely provide a follow-up. I do want to clarify the carryover encumbrances and why we're not recognizing or truing up some of the outstanding projects. For instance, the Memorial Park Pond repurposing project, we did provide a supplemental desk item to a lot of these questions. These projects, yes, they are completed, but there's some follow-up. So until the project's absolutely hundred percent done, done, we would like to keep the accounting open. We can certainly true up, however, if we defund the remaining, and for some reason that out of the contingency, we needed to come back to council, that will slow down the project. So we would like to keep that.
I have limited time, so let me ask this.
I think you're out of time, actually, Councilmember Chow.
This is important because this is completed, but amount is only one thousand. So does that mean we are saving six thousand dollars kind of, and that we are reducing six thousand dollars in expenses?
I'm not sure if I understand your question.
For this one, this is marked completed, and the expense is one thousand thirteen hundred, and the total budgeted amount is seventy-five hundred. Does that mean...
Councilmember Chow, we could just...
Okay, thank you.
Stop since you're out of time. And I will take Councilmember Way's comments.
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. I'd like to bring this aspect to focus. A budget is an estimate of income expenses for a set period of time. We're here to accept the city manager's mid-year financial report with two items, budget modification. So this, all the CIP and work plan are for our information of what's happening with our funds that's being in the CIP and work plan. I don't think we're here to resolve, you know, what's left. And what's left really is not in the budget, it's restricted funds that we are going to, it goes back to CIP or work plan until the council decides what to do. So I really appreciate all the information that's been given to us, so detailed of work plan and our CIP projects, but this is not we are approving. We actually are going to accept the mid-year budget report and do two modifications of real income that's unexpected. One is out of the utilities, because utility company raised rates, we're paying more, but the city is getting that amount of money. And one is from the treasurer, the senior centers treasurer, hidden treasurer, and we have income expense. These information that we're talking about in details actually are for our information. I don't think the council has decided, and I'm pretty sure, is it going to come back to council for CIP and work plan to say what's going to move forward, what's going to be canceled, and what's work in progress? So to me, these are very good information that the finance department has given us because I understand our residents and council members want details. So I really appreciate the details, and I really believe that we need to come back to the focus that we are accepting a mid-year report for fiscal year 2023, 2024 with two real true-ups, one is with two real budget modifications. So I really want to bring back to, the budget is an estimate of income expenditures for a set period of time, and this set of period of time is our fiscal year 23, 24 mid-year financial report.
Yeah. I, thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Way. I wanted to make a comment as well. This is the status of our budget as of the mid-year. We are not making budget decisions today. We are not making cuts, we're not making additions, we're not making any, taking any budget actions today. This is just a status report, and our obligation today is to adopt the resolution approving this sort of very small budget modification of ten thousand in expenditures and revenues of eight hundred and seven thousand. So the questions, the comments I'm hearing about encumbrances and carryovers, this is not something that we can do, at least in my experience, just do at any time of the year. There is a time to do it, and that's usually the end of the year when all the projects are reviewed in its entirety, and then you make the decision whether there is, the project is completely complete, or if there is anything remaining, in which case you carry over the encumbrances to the following year. So I, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think this is the time to be eliminating encumbrances or carryovers. Councilmember Moore?
So with regards to the budget amount, we've actually increased, and I understand members of the public who are concerned about this, we've increased the budgeted amount, and we went up about, looks like about four million dollars from the carryovers and the encumbrances. So if you look at the Attachment C, it's now eighty-six million added on to the adopted budget of a hundred and twenty, about a hundred and twenty-two million, which takes us the two hundred and eight, which is reflected on page one of the city council staff report. Additionally, so my suggestion, my motion is not that we make those changes, but I do believe there's some reconciliation that needs to happen with regards to special projects and Attachment C. And namely, when you're looking at the amended budget column, you're going to find various entries that are, that are missing, and I think that needs to be remedied. Also, some of them are showing up as these, as special projects, and as Councilmember Chow's noted, they may say canceled. For instance, the ERP, we budgeted seven hundred and twenty thousand plus on one line, and then another seventy thousand on the next. We still have AC2 traffic monitoring down for seventy-seven thousand three hundred and forty. That was completed, and it shows up in the special projects as having, having already been completed in the past. But I have to say, I am very happy to see that this information is being provided. It didn't, it didn't used to be given to council. So some of the special projects hadn't been completed, and then the next year's budget would come out, and you'd have a list of new special projects, and we wouldn't know what happened to the previous ones. And some, for instance, carpeting at City Hall, the money had been allocated, and it just needed to be put into the queue and have that, have that work done, which it did end up happening. So I do appreciate that this is being followed because many, many of these have been put into the budget and approved in the budget. You'll find them in around page thirty of the current budget, if you're curious what the current special projects are. And I've always thought that it was something, it would be something that would be hard to be accounting for as time would go on. And so I do like hearing that they would, they should be completed in, I believe that's in about two years. I think that's the right thing to do, but also, I think sometimes when you're looking at a list like this and you see something like the Valco project for about nineteen million dollars, where that gets confusing is that some of that is pass-through money where the city is going to get reimbursed for that. So it's not just a cost, but it shows up in our budget as being, as being a cost and increasing, increasing that amount. So I'm going to stand behind my motion. I would prefer to have more information, and I think what we're hearing from the public too is that you have members of the public who are also kind of laser-focused in on these numbers, and they're wanting to help, and they're wanting to offer suggestions for what we will cut in order to help our financial situation out. And I commend them for all of their hard work looking at this, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Fruan?
I'd just like a notion from staff as to what you conceive Councilmember Moore's motion to be asking for.
So I also thank you for the question, Vice Mayor Fruan. I do want to point out, we did, so Councilmember Moore, we did get your original email about information missing, so we did go in and update that attachment. It should have been a desk item for this evening, so that should take care of some of the missing information, I think that was listed. Some of these other projects have been transferred to, from, so for example, the license plate reader was transferred to...
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement, block leaders?
Block leaders.
Block leaders program. So that's found in the transfer section. So I think what's happening is because we are providing this detailed information, there's some minutia that's getting lost, right? So that this transfer happened, so we're having to track, and so we can track back if we have enough time. And so what happens, these come in for our financial system. We can't actually do these unless we have some sort of action that either defunded them or moved them, and we are reporting those actions with our carryovers, transfers, and council budget adjustments. So I think some of the reconciliation does occur as part of year-end, where we carry it over, we're working with the departments and saying, do you still need this? Is this still valid? And they're telling us, yes, and for these reasons, and then we're carrying over those funds. So I think, I'm hoping that some of the missing information has been taken care of with the desk item, but for some of these other items, if there are questions, we can definitely kind of follow and do an additional memo to council if there are specific projects you're interested in.
Got it. Okay. What would it take you in terms of time to be able to provide the information that's being asked for?
I think it wouldn't take too much time, as long as we know which one specifically and what are the specific questions. So we can, so for example, as we were sitting here and listening, right, Budget Manager Liang was looking to see and was able to say, okay, yes, this got transferred, we can see it there.
Got it. Okay. You know, we've had some discussion from members of the public about things that we should be cutting and carryovers that we shouldn't be continuing and so forth, but, you know, at the stage that we're in, again, we are receiving a report. There are stages in this process where the public expects us to be able to act and will come and have opinions. And it's just a pure matter of notice, I think it would be inappropriate for us to go too far beyond what people expect of us today. So I'd like to just make an additional substitute motion that would be the original recommended action to accept the city manager's mid-year financial report for fiscal year 2023, 2024, to adopt Resolution Number 24-020, and then to direct staff further to follow up with Councilmember Moore with respect to all of her questions involving the reconciliation that she would like.
I'll second that. So, but I have a friendly amendment.
We already have three amendments.
Three motions.
Three motions.
So friendly amendment, if accepted by Councilmember, and Vice Mayor Fruan. Because the motion only mentioned the Councilmember Moore's questions. I think I, there was a completed project that, as I heard from staff, it's, I mean, canceled project, the ERP is considered to be canceled. And then the license plate was, it's transferred to another department, but that's not noted here, but I noticed there are other items that says transfer to facility. So if this can be clarified so that the public wouldn't think something is canceled when it's actually not, that would be really helpful. So, yeah, I agree that probably a memo later to clarify, this would be really helpful.
Is that acceptable, Vice Mayor Fruan?
I'm not entirely sure I know what the amendment is, but it sounds like you're asking to have your questions included in any follow-up memo from staff.
Yes, and I can send in writing later, so it's more clear, but it's all in, I did share the screen and mention those earlier.
Point of order, Councilmember Fruan, my, Vice Mayor Fruan, excuse me. Maybe you could amend your motion to make that opportunity... Maybe you could amend your motion to make that opportunity available to all councilmembers in the interest of equity?
Sure. So I'll rephrase it as such, that, so my substitute motion would be as follows. The original staff recommendation with additional direction to staff to follow up with all councilmembers by, say, the end of the week to solicit their questions that they might have with respect to today's item.
And Councilmember Chow, do you accept that amendment?
Yeah, accept that, thank you.
Okay, let's, Councilmember Moore?
Okay. So we have postponed the Hybrid Commission and Committee meetings now, a couple of times. And I want to say that when, when I was on the Planning Commission, if a report came to the Planning Commission and we were needing more information before we could make our decision, or if the report, we just, we wanted to see it in a different way, so that we could understand things better, we would ask that that be done, and then it would come back to that commission. I've also seen it a couple of years ago from the VTA Board, they did not accept a report, and they wanted to see some different information. So it is not unusual to ask for an item to come back, and I think that sometimes the information isn't, isn't all presented, all in a concise way for the councilmembers. And I think it gets even more confusing when we're looking at, you know, a few hundred pages of tables of documents to go through with lots of dollar values on it, and then there's supplemental materials that are coming in, or things getting put in written communications, and then at four o'clock on that day, we're supposed to try to jumble all these items together and make a report out of it. And to me, it would be a lot easier on the councilmembers and the members of the public if you just put a pause on it, you collect what the councilmembers are needing for information, what seems to be in many places, compile it all, and just bring it back, and then people can have their discussions then. So to me, that would be the, kind of the easier way to do this, so that we have material. So what's going to happen now is that with this, the last motion, is that we're going to have separate questions, the public's not going to know about it, it's not going to be publicized, and I don't know that that's ideal. So that's what I have to say about that. So I can't support the third motion.
Okay, Councilmember Wei. All of you are running out of time, so I need you to be really quick.
How many minutes do we have?
You have two minutes.
Two minutes, okay, thank you, Beaun. Actually, I can't support, I cannot support a third substitute motion, but a different reason for, from Councilmember Moore. I would like to ask the staff, if all these questions are being answered, there are some in progress, right? They are in progress, so it's hard to get to the weeds of it. So I want to reemphasize, this is a budget estimate expenditure for a period of time, which is now. So if we don't have this, we have to answer all these questions, can, is this report still accurate at this point of time?
Good. Yes, this is accurate to what's in our financial system.
And my second question is, I have a couple, even if we don't put this in the motion, you are going to answer the councilmembers' questions, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I really don't see the point of making a motion of answering councilmembers' questions in a period of time, and what happened next if the councilmembers are not satisfied with the answer? So is this motion not passed or passed? I'm, for one, always want a simple solution, and then this is a point of time that we have an accurate financial report, a mid-year fiscal report. Whatever councilmembers and the public want to know, I'm pretty sure the staff will answer the questions, put on a desk, and the next adjusting of our financial report is when?
That's correct.
So that, my question is, when would our next financial report modification comes up?
It would come in March, I'm sorry, not March, May, with the third quarter.
Right, and then we have a lot of more questions to, and then at that point of time, we have project that's in progress or finished, or, so we have another different budget report at that point of time?
Correct, and staff does try to take into account different recommendations from councilmembers. So Councilmember Moore did point out to us that our attachment at first quarter, the font was way too small, and that there was information missing from there as well. So we did make an effort at mid-year to try to kind of, the document should now be easier to read, one, and then the second is trying to make sure we're working with our departments to say, "Hey, we had missing information, we need to make sure you get it updated." As Councilmember Moore pointed out, we have not been presenting, previously, historically, we haven't presented it. So every time we get comments and things that we can change or add to it, we're looking to continuously improve, and we usually try to do that before the next quarterly report. So we try to do something similar with this one, and just want to say thank you to Councilmember Moore for her feedback. We do hear you, and where we can, we do try to incorporate it, and I don't mean that just for Councilmember Moore, any of the councilmembers, even sometimes the public brings up good points of something we don't have, and as best we can and as quick as we can, we do try to incorporate those recommendations.
Okay, thank you, I have no questions. I cannot support a third substitute motion because, a different reason, because I do think at the point of time of this now, it is a good financial report, and we will follow through and transparent and answer questions from the public and the city councilmembers from now on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Councilwoman Chow, you're out of time.
Yeah, so I was just going to...
Let's go with the motions that we have.
Yeah.
On this motion, I have not spoken, I think.
We just have five minutes for the entire discussion.
For the entire?
And, you know, I think we've discussed this with most, most of the, you know, relevant comments coming out of all of you.
Can you just make a really short one?
It's actually a very straightforward act, that action that we're supposed to take, which is just approving the resolution. So let's go with the, yeah, if you'd like, excuse me, let's go with the second motion.
Second substitute motion.
The substitute motion.
Second substitute motion.
The second substitute motion. If we could sort of reiterate the second substitute motion, Councilmember Fruen, Vice Mayor Fruen?
I can share my screen with all of them if you'd like.
Yeah.
Let's see. So this is the amended second substitute motion is, right, it's Fruen amended the second substitute motion for the staff recommended action to accept the city manager's mid-year financial report for fiscal year 2023-2024, adopt Resolution Number 24-020, approving budget modification number 2324-326, increasing appropriations by $10,057, and revenues by $807, $672,000, and with additional direction to staff to follow up with all councilmembers by the end of the week to solicit their questions that they might have with respect to today's item. Chow accepted the amendment. That is the motion that's before you.
Councilmember Wei, did you have something to say?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm good.
Okay. I think your light is...
Okay.
All right. So that was the second substitute motion. Let's go ahead and vote on the second substitute motion.
The second substitute motion as amended fails with Chow and Fruen voting yes.
Okay. So let's go back to the original motion. The first substitute motion.
First substitute motion.
The first, can we see that on the screen, please?
Yes, certainly. Okay, so the first original substitute motion, Moore moved and Chow seconded. And Councilmember Moore, you can please correct me if I captured any of this incorrectly. Moore moved and Chow seconded a substitute motion to reconcile Attachment C, which is, I believe, entitled Description of Carryovers and Adjustments Through December 31, 2023, with the fiscal year 2023-24 mid-year special projects for completion and/or removal of some light items, and return to council with that information and a newly recommended budget modification. Is that...
Okay, let's vote by lights.
Page.
The substitute motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
Okay. Now can we go back to the original motion, which is to accept this staff...
Could I propose a small amendment?
I'm not sure it's necessary.
I think I'm uncomfortable with inaccuracy in the report, as staff actually has admitted, some of the project marked canceled is not canceled yet, some of the project marked canceled is actually transferred. That's all I hope, that we can get maybe amended the report to correct inaccuracies, so that the public doesn't think something is canceled when it's, the decision hasn't been made yet. So that's all I'm hoping to have. I don't want this item to come back, or I hope is amended the report to correct the inaccurate status, so the public doesn't get this misunderstanding of a project canceled when it's not.
Thank you. This, just to remind everyone, this, all we have to do is adopt the staff recommendation to accept the mid-year budget. That is all that we have to do. And the assumption is that all gaps will be filled, all corrections will be made, all errors will be corrected, and those things don't need a motion, one way or the other. So let's just go with the original motion, which is to adopt the staff report and the budget modification of the two items, the increase in the expenditures of $10,000, revenues by $800,000, and the assumption being all the items pointed out by Councilmember Moore, as well as the others, will be included by the staff, will be amended, will be corrected, regardless of whether the motion is said so or not. So, so let's vote by lights on the original motion.
The main motion carries with Moore voting no.
Do we need a break, or are we okay to go? You're good, okay, let's move on. Okay, item number 10. Amendments to the Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 3.22, which is the purchase of supplies, materials, equipment, and services, and Chapter 3.23, Public Works Contract and Bidding Procedures of Title III, which is Revenue and Finance. Let's have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. As Greg is settling down and getting ready, thank you for introducing the item. I'd just like to provide a little bit of background, and I have the honor to introduce our one and only, very first purchasing manager for the city, Greg Card. We did steal him from City of Sunnyvale, very proud of doing that. So Greg is the product of Councilmember Moss Adams' risk assessment audit, and based on that report, it was recommended to the city to hire our own purchasing manager. It took us a while to find a credible person and qualified candidate, and we're lucky to have Greg to be on this team. So based on Greg's extensive experience in public purchasing, he took a look at our current purchasing ordinance, not that we didn't have one, but it's a bit outdated, and made a lot of suggested amendments to what you will be considering tonight. With that said, I do want to point out that Greg is a Certified Public Procurement Officer, that is a CPPO. He has over 12 years leading public purchasing for goods, services, and public works projects. He has over 20 years for public contract management experiences. He's a trainer, a presenter for conferences, seminars, and staff, and he has led process improvement, policy development, and system implementation related to public purchasing. So without further ado, we're glad to have Greg be part of our team and also do the presentation for us. Thank you.
All right, if I can get the video team to display that presentation? Great. Well, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, I appreciate the kind introduction, Pamela. So this evening I'll be presenting on proposed edits to, or amendments to, our municipal code chapters 3.22 and 3.23. First, I think it's important to discuss some of the background as to why we got here, and I think the city manager laid that out a little bit, but I think it's important to note, there were a few assessments, audits that were done internally by Moss Adams, the enterprise risk assessment, procurement operational review, and the fiscal policy gap analysis. All three of those identify procurement and other areas within our contracting process with regard to having gaps or potential high risks, and so they also...
Take the microphone, please.
They also propose additional changes that could identify improvements to our process and other things for us to view as a city. So some decisions that have been made so far is that council has received each of those internal audits, so those were all presented before council. One of the actions they took, as was already referred to, is developing the purchasing manager position, so that would be myself. And so what my goal is, is to, and the responsibility I have, is to lead, guide, direct, and support, really oversee the purchasing processes that we have here in the city. We also implemented a number of procedural improvements that occurred within the Finance Division, as well as the Administrative Services Department, and so that was immediately in response to these audits as they have come out. In addition, purchasing policies were developed, and those purchasing policies are now, were recently approved by the city manager, those are actually included as an attachment to the report, and so those provide a level of procedural detail that's important, and actually follow along with the policy framework that is recommended by Moss Adams. So what's our approach? As I mentioned, my role is to make sure that we're overseeing and following the policies that are implemented and the municipal code that we have in front of us. And so I work with staff every day to go through different purchasing decisions and ensure that they are in alignment. The purchasing policies will continue to provide transparency and broad outreach, so that we continue to remain competitive in this environment, and make sure that we're following the best practices that are recommended for purchasing decisions. Of course, they also provide guidance with regard to what considerations we should make before any contractor or vendor is recommended to be awarded a contract. And of course, we're continuing to look at improvements. So Moss Adams, as I mentioned, identified a number of improvements or potential recommendations, and we're going to continue to look at those and consider where we can implement those as we move forward. So what are the purposes of today's proposed amendments? Before we go there, I think it's important, again, to highlight that we do have a current ordinance that guides our purchases for both goods and services and public works contracting. So this by no means is an overhaul or a creation of a new code, it's just amendments that, again, will align with best practices, as well as state law, public contract code, and provide the details that we believe are necessary to provide clear instruction for what processes we follow as a city. Again, I think it's important to note that we are retaining the current structure of the ordinance, so as you review the proposed edits, again, there are modifications within the structure that's currently developed. So before I go into some of the details, I think it's important to just make sure we set context. So there are two different chapters. The first chapter of the municipal code 3.22 guides the purchases of goods and services. So goods and services would pertain to the purchase or hiring of consultants, selection of IT vendors, award of a maintenance services contract, or other goods or materials that we may need. Chapter 3.23 guides the contracting for public works projects, and so that's specifically for construction projects or improvement projects, and again, those contracts specifically are governed by state law and public contract code. So for chapter 3.22, which guides the goods and services purchases, first, it was important to provide the definition for my role, and so introducing the purchasing manager into the municipal code was important. In addition, we wanted to make sure that... In addition, we wanted to make sure that we identified a qualifications-based selection as being a procurement method for selecting a vendor. Low bidding will continue to occur, we do that currently. We also currently go through a request for proposal process, which is the means by which you would select a vendor through qualifications. We currently do that as a city, but by including in the code, we clarify that that is a process that's allowable to staff. We also recommend migrating the procedures from the municipal code into the policy. As you may have seen, the policy that, the revised purchasing policy that we have is quite extensive, and the intention was to bring all of the procedures and all of the details into a single document so that staff can follow that document when they're going through the purchasing process. And of course, that already will align with the municipal code. Finally, we wanted to clarify exemptions that are currently allowable or common for public agencies. Most importantly, we wanted to find that legal services are not required to go through a competitive solicitation process in accordance with state law, and also they're further governed by Chapter 2.18 of our municipal code. Additional ones that we've added is the use of a cooperative procurement. Cooperative procurements are us utilizing a procurement that's, that another public agency has gone through, piggybacking on that, if you will, and then awarding to a contractor or a vendor that was selected through that process. In addition, we've added sole source. So if, for example, we have a vendor that can, a single vendor that can provide the good or the service that we need, and that's qualifiable and definable, then we want to make sure that that obviously would be an exemption because going through a competitive process likely wouldn't yield any better results. For Chapter 3.23, this guides, again, the purchases for a public work project. We wanted to align our definitions, so most importantly, we wanted to bring in the definition of a public work project, which now aligns directly with the public contract code. We also added the definition of the purchasing officer, which is in Chapter 3.22, and that definition specifically includes the director of public works, who oversees all public works construction projects. In addition, we added in our bid advertisement method the acknowledgement that we do advertise our bids on our website, and so we currently advertise on the city's website. We also want to leave it, leave it open so that we have the opportunity to advertise on other public bid solicitation websites with the intention of soliciting and encouraging additional contractors that can participate with our contracts. Finally, we wanted to make sure it was clear that we could receive electronic bid submissions. In the kind of COVID and pre-post-COVID era, it's very common now to receive secure and electronic bids through a construction mechanism. And so we wanted to make sure that we allowed that in our municipal code as well to, again, further encourage vendors to participate with us rather than having to drop off paper bids at city hall or wherever the location may be at the time that bids are due. So the recommended actions, again, are, this is the first reading for these recommended amendments, and it's just an ordinance that would be amending Chapters 3.22 and Chapter 3.23 of the municipal code regarding our purchases of goods and services and contracting for public works contracts. I think it's important to note that staff is intending to bring back a second reading on March 5. And once the ordinance is approved, and if it's approved at the second reading, then the ordinance would actually go into effect on April 5. And that concludes my presentation and available for questions.
Mayor, your microphone.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Moore?
Welcome, Greg, and thank you for the very comprehensive policy. And I really appreciate the purchasing matrix that you've put together here, too. Really helpful, just a quick question about when I, when I look at the purchase amount, what is the timeframe for, for the purchase amount? For instance, I'm going to assume that when I look at the accounts payable and I see credit card charges, that that is referencing the P card. I think that that's correct. So it has a purchase amount here of up to $5,000 without having bidding requirements. Is that, what's the timeframe for that? And is that per individual? Or, because it seemed like there was some, another, another location in the purchasing policy that referenced the P cards, and maybe it had a different dollar amount? Not really sure.
Yeah, so I'll try and quickly describe. So the P card, the thresholds for any purchasing card is governed by each individual user. That typically is governed by each transaction. So purchasing cards operating independently are governed typically by individual transactions and total monthly purchases. So there's thresholds with regard to both of those amounts. Neither of them likely exceed the $5,000 competitive threshold that we've now implemented administratively. So for, for purchases that exceed $5,000, we've then laid out a process by which they would go through a competitive solicitation.
Okay, so that's a single purchase. So would that mean that on the, on the statements that I would not see for a given month, more than $5,000 for a staff member making a purchase of? Is that right? Okay, thank you. And then we also have Home Depot charges that come through, and I don't know if that is done as, as like a, as, like a credit card. So I would, maybe someone from staff could respond to that. Because I would assume that the Home Depot charges would be under the same rules of P card, but I'm, I'm not sure, and I don't have any insight when I'm looking at the accounts payable for how that actually happens. So just hold that question, and since I'm running out of time. When I, when I look at the purchase amount, say, of, above $200,000 where it would need to go to council, that is, that is for the entire life of the contract. That is not an annual $200,000 where you can, okay, so two, okay, good. So we'll, then I will give, provide a scenario. So what happens if an original contract is below the $200,000 and it doesn't need to go to the city council? So say it's at $150,000. What happens when they, staff might want to amend the contract and continue on? And so next, next year, we see an amendment for $51,000, okay? And what, what happens, because you, you didn't do the RFP, what, what happens then?
So an amendment to a contract, once a contract, any contract exceeds $200,000, it'll likely be presented before council unless there's an exception otherwise or further or previous, I would say, allowance has been given. So to be clear, once a contract exceeds $200,000, it'll be presented to the city council for consideration of approval.
Okay, so what about the RFP part? Because I'm, for instance, professional consultant or unique services, if it's above, if it's between 60 and 200,000, it's an RFQ or an RFP. And it, just to help us all understand that, that vocabulary, please let us know what the difference is between the two. And then what happens if, you, you need an RFP if it's above 200,000? So is that going to get triggered if, if they try to amend over the 200,000?
Good, okay, good question. I'll try and clarify. So the intention is, if you, if you've gone through a competitive process and selected a vendor, and let's say in your example, we have a $150,000 contract, if the needs continue with that vendor and it's appropriate to extend that agreement and, and increase the contract amount above $200,000, then that contract will be presented before council. It's likely in that council report, we should identify what procurement process we followed to select them. Separate from that, if we have a $150,000 contract and we find that we have another $50,000 need, staff would have to make the decision with regard to what procurement process we need to go through. If the decision is to amend the agreement, or the $51,000, if the decision is to amend the agreement, then again, that contract would come before council. If the decision is that that's a new purchase altogether, then that purchase individually would follow the procurement policy. Quickly, just the difference between an RFP, request for proposals, is typically qualifications-based, so I discussed that as one of the amendments. An RFQ would be a request for quote, that's typically low bid. So different considerations based on what the need is for the intended selection.
Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Mohant, and thanks for the briefing. It was very good and nice to meet you, Greg. And so to follow up with councilmember Moore's question on the small purchases under 5,000, we do have a check and balance procedures. Can you explain what's the check balance procedures for that? Not for Greg, but for Christina.
So yes, so whether it's a credit card purchase or if we're just using a PO to purchase any goods or services, there's a two-level approval that happens within the department, an entry and an approval level. And then on top of that, then it comes to finance, where finance will do spot checks to see. For the credit cards, they actually review every credit card statement and ensure that there's backup related to it for the credit card specifically. And then for any other transactions, it's also making sure that the backup is tied to it as well. So two-level checks at the department and then an additional check when it gets to finance for, you know, making sure that the dollars are there that they need, that if they haven't encumbered, they're hitting that PO, and specifically that there's an attachment that justifies the expense that's occurring as well.
So thank you for the clarification, because we see that on the statements all the time. And I would think we could trust the two-step verification for the staff that there is a procedure for that. And my other question is for the, I've seen that, and when the additional amount exceeds, added up exceeds $200,000, it does come back to council. And but to follow your question, Greg, if it has to be a new vendor just for the $51,000, does it come back to council as a new project? Because the same project, it would just, under 200,000. Okay, for the same vendor that exceed 200,000, the council would take a look at it, and also it would have to come to council, and the original bid procedures would be presented to council at that time.
Correct, just to clarify, too, I mean, that would be under the presumption that not, not simply because it was the same vendor, the intention is that you're amending the original contract with that vendor.
Understood, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Chow, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Thank, well, thank you, welcome. I, let me share the screen. My question is mainly about the exemptions. So I see that you have separated that into two categories, category A and B. For A are the, the essential emergency service and legal service. For this, it's, it was with the written consent of the city manager, and now it's, the purchasing order is authorized to issue a purchase order. For the category B, I see that there is, there are a list of possible situations that could be exempt. It's, the decision is also made by the purchasing officer alone, but then it says the exam, the exemption determination will be documented. So I wonder, for category A, it's unclear how this would be documented and this determination would be made. And I am concerned that if a single person is making this decision, would that be in consultation with the city attorney, for example? Or maybe, maybe should have an approval of the city manager? So I, could you clarify that? And then for the category B, if it's documented, where it will be documented?
Yeah, great question. So for number one, the purchasing officer in the municipal code is defined as the city, city manager or their delegate. So the city manager would ultimately become the purchasing officer. So by way of striking that, it was just eliminating the confusion because those two positions are one and the same. So the purchasing officer would be the one making the approval. The first section actually identifies specific exemptions that don't per se come to council regularly. So it would be an emergency contract, which is intended to say we need to act immediately and then come back and report to city council, so that would occur. The second one would be the essential services, which are defined, which don't currently come to council. The third one is including the legal services, which we're saying are governed under 2.18. The second section actually defines the purchases that could be considered exempt through going through a competitive process. The determination would be made through an internal form that we use. It's called an exemption request form. So staff would document that. The purchasing authority, by way of the purchasing matrix is defined. That person also would sign off, off on it, and I would review it as the purchasing manager. So either recommend, not recommend, provide amendment. So that's where I would insert myself in the process to make sure that that's clear. But internally, as a document, we would have a form to acknowledge the reasons why we're exempting the procurement.
So purchasing officer is the city manager, purchasing manager is you. So these are two different terms?
Correct.
Okay. And then in, in budget or in reviewing agreement, how would any council member or the public know which contract is done through the exemption for competitive process or, or category A or B? Would there be some kind of categorization in our budget?
I don't know how we would, well, I guess the budget would approve the allowances for what we would then go forward and procure. So, you know, I won't make up an example, but I'll just say if staff is going through the procurement process and it's determined that, for example, a cooperative procurement exists, then we would likely document the exemption, identify the contract, both in our purchase order internally and what's distributed, kind of review and attach that contract and all the mechanisms that created it. So we'd have all of that internally.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Another question is in my screen share. And the original ordinance has item D, where the architects, engineers, land surveyors, and artists were lists that could be exempt. But the new one doesn't include those. But then it's added the financial economics, accounting, accounting was there before, and administrative matters. So why the change?
So the exemption I currently identified in section D is intended to say that those vendors aren't selected via the low bid procurement process. They would be selected via the qualifications-based selection. So that was the intention of adding in, in the proposed amendments, the RFP process, the request for proposal, which is qualifications-based. The additional one for specialized services is the government code allowance that says those particular identified classifications do not require us to go through a competitive process.
Oh, I see, thank you. I had a comment. Welcome, Manager Card. Thank you for your presentation today. My question was relating to what Moss Adams pointed out in their audit. Does this new policy with all the changes and the amendments and the updates, do they satisfy what Moss Adams had laid out in terms of what, what is needed for a good purchasing policy? Or the best practices purchasing policy? And my second question is, have they seen it?
Yes, they have. They've seen it, they approved it before we presented it for approval internally. And they recommend that, along with the amendments that we're proposing today. Those fall within their policy framework guidelines.
Okay. So in their next annual assessment, we won't see anything about purchasing shortcomings?
I would hope not. Well, I guess it would be, I just got here, so. I'm gonna cross my fingers and say yes.
Okay, we'll give you a pass for a while. Thank you. Vice Mayor Fruen?
Yeah, I'll just chime in and welcome you, south of the border here. Wonderful presentation. I'm glad that we are responding finally to the issues that Moss Adams identified, some goodness, three years ago now, I think it is. One of the things that you did mention earlier, just to take this up sort of 50,000-feet level, was the term administrative policy. And I think we're all very aware that council sets policy in general. But if you could describe for us what administrative policy is and where you think the edges of it lie, I think we'd all appreciate that.
Sure. So in the supplemental memo, or response, we wanted to make sure we clarified to our understanding the differences. And so, so for staff, I would say administratively, the intention is that we would set procedures, specific steps, actions that need to be taken. And so those, again, could trickle through my position at the director level via the delegation from the purchasing officer role, and then again, all the way down to staff. So identifying those, again, in a policy is recommended through Moss Adams. It was identified in their audits, again, recommended through their general framework. That staff would have the ability to effectively react quickly and administratively take actions when necessary, again, within the framework of the identified policy.
Thank you. Let's do public comments for item number 10. Are there any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have one request to speak from Peggy Griffin. Anyone wishing to comment?
Anyone wishing to comment, please submit a request to speak card in the next nine minutes, or raise your hand virtually.
Thank you. Hello again, Mayor Mohan, council members, staff. I want to welcome Manager Card. I am excited to see some structure needed with the contracts. I also would like clarification that we are not going to have evergreen contracts. When I read everything, it suggested five years max. So I'm assuming that in this process will be a review of all the contracts, to see which ones have already expired, and need some addressing? Yes. And with that said, I am seeing a growing pattern of, I've got something on the screen. Thank you, Kirsten. A growing pattern of signing contracts before council direction or approval is received. Examples, the city attorney Jensen hired Linda Dobby one week before getting direction from council. Staff negotiates and finalizes a contract with Cumming Management Group 15 days before council gives direction. Number three, staff hires Team CVX LLC to do revenue measuring, measure polling almost a month before council gives any direction at all. This has to stop. Council, in our ordinances, city power, city council retains the power to do this, and it's department part, and the conduct of city business through the office of the manager. The power cannot be delegated. Staff, the primary function of city staff is to, is the execution of city council policy and actions taken by the council. And the city manager shall be the administrative head of the city government, acting under the direction and control of city council. So before a contract is negotiated, it needs to go through council. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next we have Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, I wasn't planning on speaking to this item, but I realized I had something that was germane, that maybe you can help out with, so I'm so excited that you're on board. Two of the pillars, or it's actually the first top two that's mentioned, our budget for council goals, transparency, and public engagement. So I get curious about some things sometimes, and I'm sure that many people do, and I was curious about what the city's cost of the litigation from the YIMB organizations. And I found that the city had engaged the services of Goldfarb Littman, a law firm, and the thing is, is that the city has engaged that firm to also do a review of our housing element, and has also had them do other various things in the past. So when I go to accounts payable, I can't tell, thank you for nodding, I can tell you're listening, I can't tell, if I want to look up, how much have we spent on legal services for the housing element, or how much have we spent on various things, can't tell by going to the accounts payable. And I think that that would really go a long way to providing more public engagement, and especially transparency, to understand, to understand what services we're paying for. Because we can't tell, we can tell who we're, who we're, who we're paying, but not what the services are. And so I'd like to see if we can make sure that those contracts get bubbled up properly, because it looks like, I can't tell, because the stuff was redacted, but it looks like individual bills even from the supplier were, had multiple services in them. But I couldn't tell for sure. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. And Mayor, no further requests to speak on this item.
Yeah. Thank you to the speakers who spoke up today. Let's bring it back to council. And for purposes of discussion, I'd like to have a motion. Is there a motion? Our recommended action is fairly straightforward, which is to conduct the first reading.
I'm happy to move the recommended action.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussions. Councilmember Chow, you have five minutes.
So I wonder if we can answer some of the questions from the public. Evergreen contract, are we for certain that that should now happen, because it has happened before? And then about the potential of approving contracts before council direction, does this policy even address that, or not? And then from Rhoda Frye, when we have one company providing multiple services for the city for different projects, shouldn't we list the amounts under a separate title in our accounting? Thank you.
So I'll try and capture all three of those the best I can. So an evergreen contract typically would mean that it has no sunset, there's no end date or termination date. I would say, in very rare cases, would you want to pursue an evergreen contract? And there's many concerns with that, just from a contracting perspective. Terms change at times, obviously you want to consider when there's opportunities for additional procurement.
I have very limited time, so just, I just want to know, where is the proposed policy? Would that be allowed or not?
In evergreen contracts, no. The recommended approval, or proposed contract length is between five and 10 years.
Good. Just that confirmation is good enough. Next question. So regarding, they mentioned potentially, a contract approved before council direction?
I'll take that, through the mayor. So I think there's a bit of a confusion. So the contract did not get to council for approval. Staff have to initiate the work with the consultant, to understand what work needs to be done before that contract could be coming to council for the final approval.
Okay. So that's not an issue the purchasing ordinance could address?
That's correct. This addresses procurement, it does, it does not address, you know, what actions are within the purview of the city manager, or city attorney, or council, except for the amount of the procurement.
I just want to confirm that. And then regarding the third question, accounts payable, when once, one company provides service for multiple projects, is it possible to list them separately?
I'm not sure if this is related to the purchasing ordinance, but we can definitely take that question offline.
Yeah, again, that's, that's, that would be an accounting question, that's not addressed by this ordinance, but, but we could certainly discuss, particularly, I would be hesitant to discuss anything related to legal services in a public setting, but happy to have that discussion with you.
It may not be legal service, it could be just one, like Placeworks, maybe a consultant that's providing, helping us with multiple projects. It would be nice to know.
I understand.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Okay. Thank you for the answers to the previous questions from Councilmember Chow. If, if we are aware of some things, or concerned that some things are, look a little bit irregular, I would assume that we would forward that information to you, since you're, it sounds like you're in charge of the contracts essentially. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Through the mayor, if I may. So when Councilmember Moore, just clarification, something weird, we also have the city's fraud and waste abuse hotline. So that would be appropriate area for independent auditor to looking into that investigation.
Okay. And then for some things, it might be that we'd want some clarification about, it might, perhaps something looks like an evergreen contract, and we would want a professional to be reviewing it, and seeing if that, if that, they agree to that, and then if, if it is agreed, then what would the next steps be with regards to that? And, you know, we just, we leave it to you and the staff to decide what to do moving forward. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. So I have two questions. Actually, maybe not for you, Greg. Do we ever have an evergreen contract? As, as just for our staff? Do we, do we even have an evergreen contract? Just a question.
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you. And the second question is, whenever we email staff, for example, Greg, now you're officially a Cupertino city staff. I think we do have, the council member can ask questions, and we, we should see, always see city manager, so that it's a standard procedure, and you're willing to answer any questions that the council has, and as long as we see city manager.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Chow, you're out of time, so. I don't have time? No. Councilmember Moore?
So, just to clarify, I'll be forwarding a contract for you to look at. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I believe, I might have lost track of time, but I believe Councilmember Chow has at least two minutes left, if she, if she would like to complete her comments.
Go ahead, I have it down zero.
Thank you so much. I think, I remember very clearly the city had an evergreen contract with the Chamber of Commerce, and the former city manager, Jean Trup, was trying to justify it the day before he decided to leave. So we had one, but fortunately, it's good to know we don't have one now. And my question is regarding documentation. I think with competitive bidding, it's good, but it's good, I understand sometimes there might be exemptions. But the exemption from competitive bidding, there, the public would always be concerned about potential favoritism, even unintentional. So I wonder what kind of records might be available for public record, in terms of the documentation? How do we ensure that everything is carried out transparently, that we have records to show that we are doing things fairly to everyone? Thank you.
Yeah, I can answer that question. So generally, you know, before a contract is signed, you know, records related to the bidding will be withheld, because they would give competitive advantage to others participating in the bidding. After the contract is awarded, those records are public, and they would, you know, absent some unusual circumstance, they would be released in response to a Public Records Act request.
And I would just add, I mean, of course, right, any internal documentation that staff has, that's what we intend in the policy to dictate, is that we've identified specific roles that are responsible to hold information, make decisions, and we try and clarify who the purchasing authority is, again, including the purchasing officer. But again, by way of delegation for streamlining, that occurs, so.
So, just very quickly, so the ordinance says the decision by the purchasing officer or manager will be documented. Is that document public record or not?
I, it depends on the, I'm not sure of the nature of the document you're referring to. But certainly, certainly, scoring of RFPs would be a public record.
Thank you. I do think I have a couple of minutes. I really don't want to have an argument on the dais, but I want to clarify, when Christine, you told me there is no contract, that doesn't have a sunset date. I think the question is, with five, four city manager within five years, I think the question was, we didn't even have a contract with the chamber, to start with. I remember we were looking at the contract and couldn't find one. It could be a verbal contract or something. I know that's water under the bridge, but I just want to clarify, I do believe that when you answered, there's no evergreen sunset, that is a true statement.
That's correct. So that there was no contract that could be located, and it was our understanding that it had been a verbal contract made many years prior.
I'm pretty sure with Greg on board, that's not going to happen anymore. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, which is to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Mayor, just a couple of things. First, I'd like to bring to the council's attention a typo in the ordinance number. It's, it reads 24-2254. Actually, the correct number is 24-2255. I can make that correction administratively. And secondly, I wanted to just confirm that the mover and the seconder, Chow and Frun, also intend that further reading of the ordinance be waived, and that the city council conduct the first reading of the ordinance by title only.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. And so I will go ahead and read the title. This is the first reading of ordinance number 24-2255, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, amending chapters 3.22 and 3.23 of the municipal code regarding the purchase of goods and services and contract and bidding procedures for public work contracts.
Okay. Let's vote by lights, please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mayor, can we take a recess?
We're almost done here.
Yep, one more item that was pulled.
All right, five minutes. Thank you. There was one consent item pulled, item number six, by Councilmember Chow. So we'll take care of it now, and Councilmember Chow, if you'd like to tell us why you pulled it.
Yeah, I pulled because a member of the public has questioned regarding that accounts payable. I think some question was related to, some services were provided by one provider, but then it seems combined, so they have question about what exactly is in that amount. Is that suitable to be answered on this item or not?
So.
Like Goldfarb, I think it was mentioned.
Yeah, so I, so, so, let me explain it. So, I mean, so the issue that's being presented to council is whether, you know, the checks that were issued by the treasurer were due and owing at the time that they were paid, and council is being asked to ratify that. So, so, you know, so how the accounting was done for those specific charges is not specifically relevant to this item, or, you know, necessary to approve the accounts payable. You know, that said, you know, it, you know, staff has, you know, has received the same questions about the GL accounts, from which, you know, some of these funds were paid out of, and staff is looking into that, and, you know, and if they're, you know, they need to be corrected, they'll be corrected, and we can certainly follow up with, with council to advise them of that, if, you know, a correction is made.
Great. So I still have a question. For example, company A, I won't use the names, so say, company A is working, helping the city on project B and C, and then maybe they have done work for project B for $1,000, and project C for $2,000. Does the city cut them one check for $3,000, or do we cut them two checks, so that they will show up as $1,000 and $2,000 as two different items, so it's more clear?
I believe that that would be a question for our Director of Admin Services. I'm going to ask her to be brief with her answer, to try to keep us focused on the agenda question before us.
It depends on how the vendor has invoiced us.
So can we ask them to invoice separately for separate projects, so that in terms of accounting, we are more transparent?
So it will, it will depend, they can invoice us all on one invoice, and call out different, different projects that they're working on, but it would still be on one invoice, we would cut one check versus several separate invoices, several separate checks.
But as the public agency, my question is, can we require them to cut a separate checks on, to give us separate invoices on different projects, so that we can have different accounting item listed? Then for the member of the public, it's more clear, this company A is providing this much service for project B, that much service for project C, otherwise, it's very hard to tell, right?
Through the mayor, if I may, and also listening to Chris's suggestion, to try to keep it germane to the item, we can definitely have a follow-up conversation.
I think this is germane to the item, in accounts payable, I'm trying to make, maybe not this one, but in the future ones, can we try to make that more clear, so that future accounts payable could be improved?
We can certainly talk to the vendors, but really, there's no requirement for them to itemize. It will help staff, and potentially also provide that transparency that you mentioned to the public. This is a relationship that we're building with the vendor, there's no requirement. requirement for such vendors to provide invoices that you described.
It's up to us to require them, right?
So just, I mean, just to clarify, I mean, you know, this is not necessarily an issue. I mean, the issue here is that these invoices are largely confidential, and so that makes it difficult for members of the public who are, you know, not within the scope of privilege to identify what's on them. It doesn't necessarily have anything to do with how the invoices are segmented. Certainly, certainly.
I understand for the gold farm item, you are saying because it's legal services, so it's confidential, we can even know what amount for each project?
No.
Even that's confidential?
The services provided are confidential, so the amount paid is not.
The amount paid is not, right?
Correct.
So the public has a right to ask how much for project B, how much for project C?
In some cases, that would be confidential. In some cases, it would not be.
And for this particular case, I think the item brought up, gold farm, for example, is it possible to provide some, any information that's public later?
So some of that information has already been provided, but, yeah, I mean, again, I mean, we are, we're straying a little bit far from what's on, you know, the item that's before council, and so I'm happy to have a follow-up conversation with you about this if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lee?
So, I do want to follow up with this item being pulled. I do believe that if the public or council have questions on certain invoices, they can certainly email city manager or finance director or the city attorney, if it's asked from the city attorney, and then can get the answer whether it's confidential or not, whether it can be revealed or not. Again, I think this is a trust issue. I want to ask Christina, that when you pay invoices, you don't just pay them. You do have procedures to check and balance everything. Does that procedure exist?
As answered previously on the previous item, yes. So there are checks and balances in any financial transaction that's occurring within the city.
Okay, so that would be my, I would trust we have procedures to verify what payment's being paid for this certain company, what project is being paid. And all the project would have been approved by the council either on an RFP or, you know, it's one of the approved project that we see on the invoices. Is that, can I assume that's correct?
Correct, but in addition to any part of kind of our base expenditures, ongoing maintenance, things that we do on a regular basis, those come to council as part of the overall budget that you approve. But generally, what we ask the council to do is approve anything over that. So that those, you wouldn't, you may not necessarily see those contracts come before council, but they're baked into our baseline expenditures needed to run city operations.
So I do sometimes ask, what is item for? Is it for a trip or something? And I get answers back. So I would think that if we have certain questions on any kind of invoice, we could feel free, whether we are public or council members, to email finance and city manager or city attorney to get clarifications.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. And I just want to see if we'll be able to be provided with some information regarding the BMR fund attribution, if we can be provided that, because this would end up on the AB 1600 report at the end of the year. So, and we know that we have to make sure that everything that's debited from that is appropriately done so. So can we, that's been addressed?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, this is, I mean, yes, we're aware of the issue. If, you know, if there's something that needs to be fixed, we'll address it, and we can certainly follow up with council to let them know that it needs to be addressed.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Let's just go to, I think you're done.
I don't think I used up all five minutes, okay?
I have to say that I estimate that you have maybe two minutes left, Councilmember Chow.
Okay, thank you. Or maybe Councilmember Frun, do you want?
No, but I have been keeping track of time. I read you as being at about two minutes and 10 seconds remaining.
So you're right, I'm sorry, I was wrong again.
Thank you, that's okay. Thank you so much. So just want to clarify, thank you for the public who have written to us to point out that the BMR 265 fund appears to be used to pay for lawsuit from a certain nonprofit group, and that's what we are trying to clarify. And I want to find out in terms of process, if this is not the time to, for the public to find out about this and ask us what other venue they could have asked?
This is an administrative issue that, you know, generally staff would handle.
Because they have a question, why this BMR fund is not used for directly providing BMR housing? You mean, the public is not allowed to ask this question?
They're certainly allowed to ask the question.
And then, this is a, they found it out from the accounts payable, so then it seems to be appropriate for them to be asking this question at this time, right? And then we can answer them later, of course, but the question, there is no other venue they could have asked this question, right?
Right, the accounting is an administrative, is an administrative matter. That's correct.
So I guess to simplify the answer, feel free to call me, feel free to email me. I mean, I think the forum for like this today is to ratify the APs. But if the members of the public and council members have questions in terms of our own internal accounting procedures, that's what we're here for. Christina and I will be more than happy to look into what may cause the confusion and provide that clarification. I just hate to waste everyone's time on the dais to go over some procedure that is more internal administrative. But we're here to provide that answer for you at any time.
Having said that, are there any public comments?
Mayor, I have two.
Brief and, yes.
Mayor, I have two requests to speak.
Oh, we have to, okay.
Jennifer Griffin and Rhoda Frye. And I see one more speaker card. And I see one hand virtually raised.
Good evening, city council. Thank you for this discussion. I was reading through the packet and the comments, and I am, yes, I'm very concerned about why we paid, I'm going to say it, housing defenders and YMB law. They sued Palo Alto on the same day they sued Cupertino. I can say it, I'm a member of the public. They're not hush-hush. We know how they operate. It's fine. They've sued other cities. We paid them.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Sorry.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Why were BMR funds used?
Could you, yeah, these questions are not germane to the agenda item.
Next, we have Rhoda Frye followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi. So I wanted to thank Attorney Jensen. We spoke briefly on Thursday night and finally got my stuff together. At the same time, in dealing with staff issues and even coming here with issues in the past, I haven't, I have gotten answered. I have these, we, the community has questions, longstanding questions about the finances of our city, and we're not getting our answered questions answered. And this is why I put it forward in this venue. And also, sometimes people are saying that what we are coming up with is not necessarily credible. So I went through, you know, I just happened to be glancing at the, at the accounts payable, and I nearly fell off my chair because I have this sheet here. So, you know, instead of just saying, hey, you know, I kind of noticed this, I went through and I took snips of all of these accounts payables where it's like, whoa, this one to BMR housing, this one to BMR housing, this one. And then over and over and over again, I kept on seeing more, but, you know, I figured, well, you know, at this point, staff can kind of figure it out. There's also rules about what, I started looking at the rules about what we should be doing with BMR housing. And it's, developers are paying these mitigation fees in good faith that these will go toward below market rate housing, not to pay for frivolous lawsuits. And, and, and I'm very glad that this is, this is going to be addressed. And I'd like to know the mechanism. I think that we, you know, we need to do some kind of root cause analysis and understand how this came to pass. Go back and see where this account should, this account has been used in the past. In my opinion, I think that there should be, you know, skull and crossbones on this account. Well, I guess it would be like AB 1600, right? It's like, hey, you know, don't put any money into this account unless you know for sure that it is earmarked for the proper use. I really would like, I know this is an administrative issue. I understand this. We're looking at over $170,000, probably more, because I didn't go back all that far. And I think we, we the public need to understand how this happened and how it won't happen again. And I'm hoping that there's not other examples of this or examples of other funds, but we need, please. And I will bring my very old questions back to you, city manager, and I hope to have them responded to promptly. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Rhoda. Next, we have Peggy Griffin followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Mohan, council members and staff. I want to thank Rhoda Frye for bringing this up, and thank Councilmember Chow for pulling it, and thank City Attorney Jensen for offering to look into it. I beg to differ with City Manager Wu. This is not a waste of time. This is really important. And the reason is, contracts have amounts on them. And if you don't break it out between lawsuit, which had a contract amount of 50,000, and the BMR costs, which have to be reported by AB 1600, federal law, I think it is, maybe it's state, either way, it's a law above us. You have to break these out. And accounts payables needs, they can do one invoice, well, maybe not. Lump all their lawsuit amounts, I mean, each of these are different contracts. They should be invoiced separately. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. I just want to echo, this is not a waste of time. And my experience and experience from others who have contacted me, asking questions of staff via email or something else are not always answered, well, they're not always answered, or they're not always answered in a timely fashion for someone to be able to take the next step at the right time. So if this is the way to advise the public that may be watching or watch later and doesn't have time to read through everything and go through the extent of research that some of these residents do, if this is the way for residents and community members to share information with each other, then it is sure as heck not a waste of time. And you should be very happy you have people that care and that are trying to inform. So I really take offense to some of the things that were said today.
Thank you, Lisa. And we have one person virtually requesting to speak, Babu Srinivasan. Welcome.
Hi. First of all, let me thank Leon. I think whatever she asked the question, I don't see anything wrong in it, whether it is called in a dais or whether she has to take it as a separate inside discussion. But whatever she asked is the right thing because you should be able to account between projects. If you're cutting a check for asset together, I think it may be time to revisit the accounting methods. I totally appreciate, and I do feel sorry that people are just shutting her off. And we always say, or what I observe is, sometimes people don't want somebody to, this is not the right thing. And everyone should appreciate each other's time, and you should not be even saying that your time is off. There is a person who is responsible for timing. That person should make the call. We should respect each other, and we should collaborate, and we should be open to discuss each and every aspect. There is no such thing called, this is not the dais to discuss. I think that is not getting well with the public. And we should, as a council member, inside, everyone should respect each other. And we are sorry to see this type of conversation happening in public. And I see that decorum is maintained. I also see like sometimes when people talk, they are getting mic pulled out, or their timer is not correct. Few things like this oppose us or it shows up very clearly that you don't want somebody to ask some questions. I think that is not the right way for the community to engage, and we should at least correct, in the sense like whatever past we cannot rewrite, but let us get together and change the history. Let us put in the right step, in the right direction. I again appreciate Mrs. Yang and all the city council members. It's not like we are finding faults, but the openness and the trustworth in us, it has to be built, and it should not be broken just like that. A few words of passion and care will go a long way rather than starting or putting somebody in a spot. We expect something to change, and we are staying positive, and that is where we are getting engaged in this meeting. And everyone has their time spent here. Respect everyone's time. It doesn't mean that we are sitting here, doesn't have any other job to do, but it's in the public interest, in the community interest. People are getting engaged. Let us appreciate each other and do the good for the public. Thanks for the opportunity. Have a good day.
Thank you, Babu. Mayor, no further speakers?
Okay. I'm happy to move the item.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Okay, so motion by.
I'll move the recommended item, yeah, actually.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. Shall we vote by lights?
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, have we approached the end? We have. Do city manager report?
I don't have any, sorry, Mayor.
Okay, that's it. Okay, there's, oh, excuse me. Yes, Councilmember Chow?
So I'd like to propose a future agenda item, but do you want to do council report first, or do I jump to that?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Let's do it now.
For council report, I finally have a written report. I'm so sorry for the delay, but I did start from my last report. And for future agenda item, I have sent an email to the city manager to request a study session on housing element. And I looked at contract with placeworks. They can support two council meetings. So I hope before the final adoption of housing element, we, the council will finally have a study session on a draft housing element, because there has never been one council meeting where the council is able to deliberate on a draft housing element so far.
Need a second for that? Is there a second?
And also, I looked at all the cities around us. None, no other city has never had a draft housing element on their agenda before final adoption.
Okay, Councilmember Moore?
I have a question about the process for the city manager or the city attorney, because we're turning in the, on Friday, the housing element third draft, and what if it gets accepted by HCD at that point? Would it make this discussion moot, or?
Council has final authority to adopt the housing element, you know, in any instance. But of course, any changes made after a draft is sent to HCD, you know, would have to be acceptable to HCD for HCD to certify the draft. And so that would be, that is, that that is the tension.
Okay, thank you. So I do second the, the motion to have that come to the council. I would like to see if there's support to have some information about how we're not having an EIR for the, the housing element, that that was negotiated away. And I'd like to understand what the process will be like moving forward for how projects would tier or not tier without, without that document approved by the council. If someone else would like to hear about that as well, I'd appreciate it.
May Frun?
No, I just wanted to correct a misstatement from Councilmember Chow. San Jose multiple times went back and forth with HCD with regard to drafts before ever coming to council. In fact, its final approval occurred after it already adopted, and the staff sent back multiple revisions. So I don't really think that that's an accurate statement.
Sorry, I didn't look at San Jose because it's a much bigger city. I looked at Sunnyvale, Campbell, Saratoga, and.
Yeah, so I appreciate the discussion, but this is, this is, we're on future agenda items. And so this is, this is not agendized for discussion at this time. I, I think, I think, I think I heard Councilmember Chow propose a future agenda item and Councilmember Moore join in, in that proposal with some suggest, additional suggestions for scope of the item.
So should I say I accepted the addition from Councilmember Moore?
I, I, I think, I think the city manager and city attorney understand the, the, the request from both council members.
Thank you. So this will be on a future agenda. Okay, good. Okay, seeing nothing else. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Good night.